Good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's New York City Council preliminary budget hearing for the Committee on Environmental Protection, Resiliency, and Waterfronts. At this time, we ask you to silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing.
Oh, that includes me, right?
If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At any time throughout the hearing, please do not approach today. We thank you for your kind cooperation. Mr. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Great. I was just silencing my own phone. Good morning. I am council member Jim Gennaro, known today as the late Jim Gennaro. I'm alive, I'm just late. Chair of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Resiliency, and Waterfronts, today we will review the Department of Environmental Protection's fiscal 2025 budget. I'd like to begin by thanking DEP staff for all their hard work over the past year, and I look forward to hearing about DEP's successes, as well as ways we can work together to enrich the environment and protect public health for all New Yorkers. DEP's fiscal 2025 preliminary budget totals $1.6 billion. This funding includes, this includes funding for a headcount of 6,300 physicians. The department's fiscal 2025 preliminary budget has been relatively unchanged since adoption, decreasing by $55.2 million. The preliminary financial plan includes no new needs for the department, and most of the funding changes result from the cost of collecting, the cost of collective bargaining agreements with the representative unions. Today, we look forward to discussing, one, the changes in the preliminary plan and programs to eliminate the gap or pegs in the November plan; two, ongoing capital projects and growing costs; and three, the filtration avoidance determination, often known as the FAD. We'll also discuss DEP's performance indicators in the preliminary 2024 management, Mayor's Management Report, and revisit some of the topics of oversight hearings we have held over the past year, including the, and this is in quotations, "City's obligation to reduce carbon emissions from government operations," close quote, and quote, "the administration's response to the summer 2023 air quality emergencies." Next page. "It is essential that the budget the council adopts is transparent, accountable, and reflective of the priorities and interests of the people we represent. This hearing is a vital part of the budget process, and I expect DEP to be responsive." Why would they not be responsive? Of course, they're going to be responsive. I didn't write this. "to be responsive to the questions and concerns of the council members. I look forward to an active engagement with the administration over the next few months to ensure that the fiscal 2025 adopted budget meets the goals the council has set." I'd like to thank our committee staff for their hard work, financial analyst Tanvir Singh, unit head Ali Ali. We have the committee council, of course, Claire McLaughlin, policy analyst Ricky Charla, and Andrew Born, and all my hardworking staff behind the scenes. I'll mention my own legislative director, Abby Core. She couldn't be here today, but she is terrific. And I'd also like to, you know, thank the panel. Ritt and I have worked together for a long time. We have the same taste in cufflinks. These are sewer covers. You can get them at the city's municipal store in the, in the, in the Muti Building, right? Yeah, yeah. All the DEP stores in the Muti, yeah. And so I'm adorned with DEP jewelry today. And, yeah, Ritt and I have worked together for a long time, and I, I, I thank the panel for, for their, for their presence here today. This is, this is the list, right? And we join me council members Ma Morado and council member Zhang. And now I'll turn it over to the committee council to give the affirmation to the witnesses. And then you can, and then you can begin with your good testimony, which I have right in front of me. Is there any way you could make the font even smaller? That would be great for someone on the wrong side of 65. Yeah, this is like number two font here. And so, yeah, okay.
All ready to begin?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Claire, I think you're on.
Thank you. I am Claire McLaughlin, Council of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Resiliency, and Waterfronts at the New York City Council. Our first witnesses will be from DEP. Can you each please state your name and title for the record?
Rohit T. Agarwal, Commissioner of Environmental Protection.
Joseph Muren, Chief Financial Officer for DEP.
Catherine Mallon, Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you. Please raise your right hands, and I will administer the oath. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to panel member questions?
I do.
Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you again. That oath sounds like serious, so there we go. Okay. Ready, so yours.
Thank you, Chairman Gennaro, and council, and members of the Environmental Protection Committee. It's always good to be back under your leadership, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I am Ritt Agarwal. I'm the Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection and the city's chief climate officer. As was said, I'm here today with, with Chief Financial Officer and Water Board Executive Director Joe Muren, and our Chief Operating Officer Catherine Mallon, as well as several of our deputy commissioners, to discuss DEP's budget, our capital plan, and our performance. DEP protects the public health by providing high-quality drinking water, managing wastewater and stormwater, protecting against coastal inundation, and reducing air noise and hazardous material pollution. This year, we continued providing the highest-quality services to our customers and communities while keeping our harbor waters cleaner than they have been in 150 years. We are exceptionally proud of the work DEP's 5,600 men and women do every day to keep our city running, but we are not complacent. We are constantly looking for ways to do more and better serve our neighborhoods. You've been able to review our budget documents, so I will not go over them, although, of course, I'm happy to answer questions. Instead, I'd like to review a few ways we've invested the $4.1 billion we received from ratepayers last year, and address a few topics I know are of concern to New Yorkers and to members of this committee. First, our water supply remains safe, reliable, and delicious. We perform hundreds of thousands of tests each year, and our recently released 2023 Water Quality Report, recently released covering the previous year, shows that we continue to do that core job with excellence. We have several major projects underway to serve the water supply. As many of you know, the Delaware Aqueduct, which carries roughly half of our daily water consumption, has been leaking since the 1990s. DEP has been taking a roughly $1.5 billion all-toed effort to build a bypass for the leaking section. We hope to start using this new bypass tunnel last fall, but testing indicated that we needed new pumps to ensure construction worker safety, so that project was delayed. We are highly confident now that repairs will begin this fall, which will be one of, which will conclude one of the largest capital projects in DEP's history. Starting to use this new tunnel bypass requires us to shut down the Delaware Aqueduct for about six months, but we have been preparing for this shutdown for several years to ensure that there is no interruption of water supply either to the city or the upstate communities that we serve. We also expect to start work in FY '25 on a massive upgrade to the buildings where we undertake the final treatment for most of the city's drinking water at the Hillview Reservoir in Yonkers. This year, we will also begin work on, on a second tunnel that provides critical redundancy to our water supply system between the Kensico Reservoir and our Catskill Delaware Ultraviolet Treatment Plant. This is expected to cost over $1 billion, but it is vital because this is actually the only single point of failure in our, in our entire water supply system. And while there's no imminent risk, having that redundant tunnel gives us tremendous flexibility and security over the 100 or 200 years that we will expect to rely on that infrastructure. We also continue to make progress on the final two items, shafts 17B and 18B in Queens, which will allow us to place the Brooklyn, Queens leg of City Tunnel Number Three into service in 2032. I visited that site recently and am pleased to report that we still are on schedule for that date. Preventing water, or water main breaks are disruptive, and while we've had a few significant ones this year, I'm proud to report that in fiscal year '24, we are on track to have the fewest number of water main breaks on record. While water main breaks occur in all water systems with some randomness, our success in reducing them is not just luck. We are using system data and improved technology to catch small leaks and weak spots before they become major breaks. When system data identifies potential weak spots, we send out our pipe doctors overnight to investigate. Their specialized sound equipment acts like a stethoscope to pinpoint leaks before they become disruptive and expensive water main breaks. This proactive work has paid off. We've reduced leaks by 42% so far this fiscal year. Further, we are working on a data-driven, risk-based approach to water main replacements that we hope to be ready to integrate into our capital plan over the next year or two. An important finding from this work is that vulnerability is not solely due to aging infrastructure. We have found that water mains from the 1950s and 60s are actually twice as likely to break as water mains from the 19th century. And I do, by the way, I want to credit the tremendous work of Tassos Georgiellis, our Deputy Commissioner for Water and Sewer Operations, who has brought all of this, all of this data-driven analytical rigor to, to this most important, most important bureau. We don't rely on them for the outfield, it's okay. Across the United States, people are understandably concerned about lead service lines. To be clear, there are no lead water mains in our system. However, we estimate that between 110,000 and 370,000 homes in New York City may have lead service lines, the lines that are owned by the homeowner and connect from our water mains to the home. Further, an unknown number of homes have internal plumbing that either has lead or lead solder. DEP carefully manages and treats our drinking water to minimize any lead leaching from these internal pipes. So, we do not see any immediate risk to people drinking our water, and in fact, we have never seen a case of lead poisoning in New York City that was traced back to drinking water. However, we recognize that lead service lines should be replaced, and later this year, the Federal Environmental Protection Agency will finalize its revised lead and copper rule, which will essentially require all cities, including New York City, to remove all lead service lines. Last year, we initiated a New York State grant-funded program to locate and replace lead service lines in disadvantaged communities. We expect that these replacements will get underway in FY '25. Further, we're currently developing a proposal for how we would manage replacements across the city to comply with this new lead and copper rule. I will note, and with thanks, the council's support for our efforts to get New York State to treat us fairly when it comes to funding, like the federal funding for lead service line replacement. In 2022, New York City applied for nearly $58 million in federal lead service line grants distributed by the state for six disadvantaged communities in the Bronx and Queens that have severe financial hardship. The award criteria used by New York State arbitrarily restricted New York City to only 24 million, just 23% of the statewide funds, and of course, you all know, we have 44% of the state's population and 56% of the disadvantaged communities. And in 2023, we've, we're in a similar situation where we've received another only 24 million, again, a portion of funds that is less than our share. As a result of these arbitrary restrictions, we expect that New York City residents will bear the bulk of the cost of changing out lead service lines. All New Yorkers know the challenges we face from climate change. Nowhere is it more apparent than with the increased rain and flooding we have seen in the past year alone. Climate change is bringing sudden intense rainfall more frequently than ever before, and in fact, New York City experienced rain every three days in 2023. The National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, a couple of years ago, reclassified the city as a humid subtropical climate. The storm on September 29th, 2023, was the second-most intense rainfall ever recorded in the Five Boroughs, exceeded only by Ida in September of 2021. DEP has taken climate change very seriously, but it is not an issue that we can solve quickly. Here's a sample of what we have been doing. As many of you know, as part of Plan YC last year, DEP took responsibility for coastal protection and created the New Bureau of Coastal Resilience within DEP. We have hired a new deputy commissioner, Lorian Farrell, who's right here, I'm pleased to introduce her, to lead this bureau. She is building and training a team because as soon as this summer, DEP will be the agency to take over responsibility for the first operating floodgates currently under construction as part of the East Side Coastal Resilience Project. Very quickly, this new bureau will have simultaneous planning, construction oversight, and maintenance responsibilities. On catch basin cleaning, I've spoken in the past about our new data-informed catch basin inspection program, which targets more frequent inspections in areas that are likely to need cleaning. This new schedule has allowed us to increase catch basin cleanings by 22% through the first four months of FY '24, while seeing a 45% decrease in the resolution time to clear a clogged catch basin. Now, when someone calls in a 311 complaint about a clogged catch basin, we address it in an average of 2.1 days. We have also begun installing a new catch basin design that includes a second grate on the sidewalk, so the basin, basin can function even if leaves, bags, or garbage covers the main grate at the street level during a storm. In his State of the City address, Mayor Adams committed to a five-borough Blue Belt strategy, and we are working to make that real. We are particularly working closely with the Parks Department on several potential Blue Belts in all five boroughs. This fiscal year, we inaugurated the Mid-Island Blue Belt in Staten Island, and we are making significant progress on the project to daylight Tibbetts Brook in the Bronx. Over the last, you know, I'm sorry, there's a, an edit I should have made here. Over the last year, in, in calendar year 2023, DEP has added nearly 1,000 green infrastructure assets. It says rain gardens here in the testimony, but in fact, it's a, it's a broad category. About half of those are traditional rain gardens. About half of them, in fact, and I'll depart from the text here, is the, the benefit of our new unified stormwater rule. So what we are seeing, that rule is, as you know, particularly you, Chairman, was implemented in March of 2022, and it requires development, new development on large properties to incorporate onsite stormwater retention. What we are now seeing is that over the course of 2023, that program has yielded roughly 400 retention installations on private property, which is really exciting because it allows us, for the first time, really to expand beyond just public property and use the rest of the city as a way to manage stormwater. But in addition, we've got the, the traditional roughly 600 or so, most of which are those traditional rain gardens, and we are continuing to expand them. And of course, we've had great support for cloud burst projects, which design public spaces to retain water during major storm events. I'm pleased that our first cloud burst project at the South Jamaica Houses at Nycha will break ground this summer. We have another four in design that will enter construction over the next two years, and six more that we are currently seeking funding for. We've had great success seeking federal money for these. We've been selected and are awaiting award for $123 million for cloud burst projects already, and are applying for more funding for additional neighborhoods, including in East Elmhurst and Central Harlem. Stormwater management has been a priority for this administration, and our teams have been doing great work. Among our achievements this last year is the completion of an innovative, three-dimensional computer model of every one of our pipes in the city. Unlike a traditional static map, this model allows us to examine scenarios and identify bottlenecks that can cause flooding. We've also engaged in a partnership with Rebuild by Design to create a panel of New Yorkers who will provide advice and feedback on how we create resilience across the city. Finally, roughly $9 billion of our capital plan and 36% of our expense budget is dedicated to pollution control, the processing and treatment of wastewater. Because of our successes, New York Harbor now has dolphins, whales, and seahorses regularly. Just a couple highlights of our work. We're well underway in the construction of four new anaerobic digesters at our Hunts Point Treatment Plant, and it's actually a, a really distinctive new addition to the skyline of the Bronx. We are in the early stages of a major project to bring advanced technology to all of our wastewater treatment plants, which will allow our skilled staff to in-source work that we currently contract out. We're also pleased recently to have released the City Council mandated study on the feasibility of a new wastewater treatment plant on Rikers Island. This study demonstrated that the new plant on Rikers is both feasible and beneficial to DEP and the city, both in terms of financial benefits and especially environmental benefits. While water consumes the majority of our budget and staff at DEP, we also take our air, noise, hazmat, and asbestos enforcement role very seriously. We are pleased with the results thus far in our noise camera program, which now has 10 cameras in operation. These cameras don't work well everywhere, for example, near highways, but we are optimistic about their potential, and we've been pleased to work with several council members on locations for these cameras in their districts. We are looking into other technology-based approaches to noise enforcement. We're proud of the work we've done on air quality and idling. We are on track to process 100,000 citizen-enforced idling violations this year, up from only 12,000 in 2021. Such a massive increase in throughput has led to some delays, but I am pleased with how we have ramped up to get this done. Most importantly, we'd, we've had some success working with companies to convert their fleets to electric vehicles as a result of this program, and I'm optimistic that more will follow. The program does require improvement, and we believe legislative changes, but we're looking to expand participation by investing in a user-friendly app to allow citizens to report violations more easily and without the time and expertise that is currently required. We have been doing internal work to improve DEP's functions, so we can do more, faster, and more efficiently. A few highlights. Over the last two years, we've reduced our procurement times by 50% compared to procurement rates during the COVID years. Our commitment rate, the rate in which we get projects underway last year, was 103%. We got every budgeted project underway last year and a little bit more through a tremendous effort across many of our bureaus, and I'm, I could not be more pleased, sorry to depart from the text, but I could not be more pleased with what we've done. People think the procurement is just broken, and there's nothing you can do about it, and what we've demonstrated is that if you manage it, you could have a significant improvement in procurement. And I, I will say, I feel like that has energized a lot of the agency, because I don't have to tell you all how deadening it is when somebody in an agency who knows that to accomplish something that they know is important requires a procurement, and you're looking at two years before you can purchase something? It stifles innovation. It stifles the will to change, right? Now we can tell them, you know, 11 months, that's imaginable. Like, people can wrap their brains around that, and I think it really has made a big difference. Cybersecurity is a prime concern of ours, and we're in the process of building additional system improvements that will help us ensure continuity of our IT functions in the event of a disruption at our headquarters in Queens. Our DEP police, who protect our critical water infrastructure upstate, will be launching a new class of incoming cadets at DEP's Police Academy in Kingston, New York. It's not often appreciated just how important our roughly 200 DEP police officers are at protecting the water infrastructure that each of us relies upon. We have a significant vacancy relate, rate among EPOs, Environmental Police Officers, and this new class will help. Finally, I'll note that we've undertaken an exciting effort with the Partnership for New York City, which we call the Environmental Tech Lab. Modeled on their transit tech lab with, partnership with MTA and DOT, this effort uses a structured process to identify new technology solutions that DEP could use, source solutions to those problems from startups around the world, and test them at DEP. I'm pleased that our first-year partnership identified one technology to pilot and another technology that was so compelling that we skipped the pilot and are moving straight into procurement. As you know, DEP's water functions are almost exclusively funded by revenue collected from water bills. In FY '24, we expect to collect roughly $4.17 billion in revenue from our water customers. Most things cost more in New York City than anywhere else in America, but our water rates are well below those of many large American cities, and we work hard to keep it that way. Of course, the system needs to be funded, and we can only keep rates low for everyone if everyone pays their bills. Last year, we offered a one-time amnesty program to allow people with outstanding balances to save money on interest if they made down payments and entered into a payment plan. We think the program was very successful. It brought in nearly $105 million. We forgave $22 million in fines and interest, and it got, and the number's not here, but roughly 100,000 customers went from being in arrears to being current with us as a result of that program. It was a huge success. This year, though, we are focused on enforcement, because we still have roughly $1.3 billion in overdue water bills. When people don't pay their bills, they pass that burden on to their neighbors who do. We have programs that can help those who are truly struggling to pay, but it's unfair for customers who have the means to pay simply to ignore their bills. So we have started issuing shut-off notices to these properties. I was with the mayor on Wednesday when we issued one of 2,400 shut-off notices this week. We will continue to do so. We'll also be investigating legal action and alerting co-op and condo owners if their boards and management companies are not paying. Anyone who owes money should reach out to our Bureau of Customer Service. We will work with you. And council members, I also invite your support to improve enhancement. As you know, we no longer have the ability to sell liens on properties for unpaid bills, which means that shut-offs are our only enforcement option. I'm proud of the work that this agency has done during the Adams administration, and I'm, and I'm excited about what the future holds for DEP. The 5,600 men and women DEP manage our drinking water, protect our harbor, and are beginning to protect the city against climate change. We have much to do, and we appreciate your support. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and of course, we're happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your comprehensive and good testimony. We appreciate you and your team and all the work that you've done. Ordinarily, as chair, I would start off the questioning, but to make it up to my colleagues who were here before I was, I am going to call on members who, who, who have signed up for questions, and I'll also, since, since I last recognized council members, we've been joined by councilman Wrestler, Holden, and Nurse. Happy to have them with us here today. We have members who have signed up for question. This is how I'm making it up to my members for coming late, and I'll make it up to all of you by asking fewer questions, so that way we get the 15 minutes back, so. Yes, and so questions, first up for questions, I recognize council member, council member Ma Morado for questions.
Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, it's a little, I'm having a little difficulty with my, with my eyes, so I can't see as well as I used to.
And thank you today for coming to testify and giving us all this information. So when I came to City Council, I knew that this was one committee that I needed to be on, because I feel like my community is suffering. We are literally drowning in Throggs Neck, Locust Point, country clubs, City Island, and this is just our waterfront community. I live on the other side of the district, which is pretty landlocked, and the flooding is starting to become out of control on that end in Morris Park, Van Ness, Pelham Gardens as well. I wanted to know that since we do have some sewer backup complaints have increased in the beginning part of this year, I wanted to know what studies and assessments are you doing as a department that, for my district specifically, and how we can increase this, and we need some accountability, and we need to know how we can fix this issue?
Council member, thank you. And, and I will say, I mean, this is, this is the core of the problem, right, is the increase in wet weather sewer backups is reflective precisely of the change in precipitation that we have started to see really over the last 30 months. We'll see whether it's a blip or whether it is, as is predicted, really a hockey stick change because of climate change. But, you know, the, the main reason that the first four months of FY '24 showed such a spike over '23 is that, as you'll recall, 2023 was, or 2022, calendar '22 was a drought year. Calendar '23 was a very rainy year. And so just as, as, as we point out in the PMR, in September 2022, which is that first four months of FY '23, there were 4.1 inches of rain. In September 2023, there were 14.3 inches of rain. That's honestly, and of course, one of those was the massive storm of September 29th. And that's really all you need to know, because when we get one of these tremendous rainstorms, inevitably, there are a lot of wet weather-related sewer backups. So that is an indication of the challenges we face in the whole sewer system. You know, we're very proud of the fact that over the last decade, you know, again, thanks to Tassos and his colleagues, we we've dramatically reduced the number of dry weather sewer backups, right? And historically, that was the main cause of sewer backups, these, you know, fatbergs and other things. Now, climate change is throwing a new problem at us. We are doing a great deal of work on that. And for the last 18 months, we have been working on a comprehensive stormwater resilience strategy. The reality is, this is going to be a multi-year effort just to figure it out. The all-pipes model that I mentioned in my testimony is one of the first big investments that we've made. But what that means is that really, for the first time, we can actually start understanding, because the way the sewer system works, you could have flooding or sewer backups down here downstream, and the issue is you need to do projects upstream. Or you could have flooding upstream, and really, it's all about a bottleneck further downstream. Now, we can start to understand that. The reality is that the cost of upgrading all of our sewers is going to be dramatic. And we will probably next month. In Plan YC, we committed in early '24 to come out with a report. It will be a progress update. We will not have a plan by any stretch yet. But we are looking at tens of billions of dollars, even not to get to the point where we can absorb all of the water that Hurricane Ida sent at us. But even to get at what we think the quote-unquote "five- or 10-year" storm will be under climate change conditions. So, you know, it is certainly something for your district, but it's true across the city that this is of high priority. We've actually identified, based on one target, and we don't have an empirical way to, we have not yet come with a recommendation. That will be something that we start talking about with you, with the public, about what service level we should aim for. But if we are to reach, just as an example, a 2.1 inch per hour, traditionally, we've designed the sewers to absorb 1.75 inches per hour, right? Hurricane Henri was 1.9 inches per hour. Hurricane Ida was 3.75 in the worst place, 3.15 in Central Park per hour. If we try to get to 2.1 inches per hour, there are 86 places around New York City that we will have to do massive amounts of construction.
Good.
And so we are going to be, again, coming to you all, coming to the public with our thoughts on how we use a mix of underground infrastructure, green infrastructure, how we think as cost-effective as possible. But one of the realities that we are going to have to face is that anything we do strategically on stormwater resilience is going to have a significant impact on our water rates.
Well, I just want to-
And I'll just say that, notwithstanding that the time being up, I'll give the council member a little, you know, latitude for a comment.
Okay, thank you. This is not just a blip. This has been going on for many years, many years in this district. It's not something that is just, maybe it's gotten worse over time with climate change, but this is constant flooding throughout my entire district. And my people are worth the money. If it's billions of dollars, I say we do the studies, and I say we start to fix it because the damage that it's causing our homeowners, our tax-paying homeowners, it's outrageous. These people don't deserve it, and whatever we can do to fix it, we need to do, and we need to put the money into it.
And I'll just, first of all, I want to thank you for bringing this very important topic to the forefront. And the first question, I think that's appropriate. I'll mention, just to mention, that we submitted to the council leadership a plan for our April hearing to be on stormwater. 15, 20 years ago, I did a comprehensive stormwater management plan. So I put forward a bill, which is the Stormwater Management Plan 2.0. And of course, our intention as a council is to put that forward and then work with the administration, you know, to make sure that we can, you know, that we have a that we have a consistent vision on how that will work, and then that will be, you know, put into law. And so this is about as intense an effort as we can make in order to push back against, you know, stormwater. And so the Commissioner and I have had, you know, many conversations about this, but, you know, you and your constituents should, you know, rest assured that the issue of flooding and everything that, anything that, you know, your folks are going through, everyone else's folks are going through. And this is a top priority for the administration, a top priority for me as chair, and a top priority for this committee. And so, and so happy that you're a member of the committee now. And so, you bet. I recognize Councilmember Zhuang for questions.
Our community, I don't have direct water. We cannot see the water in my district, but we do see the water when it's flooding. It's raining, heavy rain. We always see the water in the basement. And one of the day this year, I still remember my husband dropped my kids to school. When he come back, all up to here, all wet. And later on, two hours later, the school called every parent. Can you guys pick up your child up from the school? Our school is flooded. And in my district, probably have the same issue as yours. All the catch basin, probably every single one is cleaned. And also, during, if any time has heavy rain, you will see on the street, people have a bucket, drain the water from their basement and dump it in the street. And the street is always flooded. And then when you drive, it feels like you are going through an ocean. And I see you guys said, now our water is clean. We're going to see dolphins, whales, and seahorses regularly. If that issue not fixed, our basement will see those animals regularly also. So I really want to address this issue and get your attention, this, what we need to do to fix. And I looking forward to work with you. And also, there's another question, noise. We do have a lot of noise complaint about the big truck. Is there anything DEP is working on?
So, councilmember, you know, on your first question, I would imagine what you're describing with your children is from that big storm on September 29th, right?
Yes.
And of course, Brooklyn was the hardest hit. Brooklyn had the most intense rain of anywhere in New York City that day. So your neighborhood was, your part of the city was particularly affected. You know, and as I said to Councilmember Mar Marado, you know, we know full well, we have been talking about the need, as Chairman Gennaro just pointed out, to where we have been working on the need of comprehensively thinking about our stormwater infrastructure for two years now. And so, as I said, we'll have more to report. And as the chairman said, we have been in discussion over how we legislate and formalize the work that we've already started so that it is a formal process that moves forward.
And what's the plan, clean up the catch basins in all the neighborhoods, especially my neighborhood? It's not, those catch basins probably never update for 50 years.
Well, so, so catch basins don't go out of style. So a 50-year-old catch basin isn't necessarily a bad thing.
And now, because the shape, everything changed, all the garbage is easily to fill up there. And when it's raining, it's, everything stuck.
Sometimes, when repavings happen and the street grade changes, sometimes that does cause a problem. And so I'd be very happy to follow up with you if you have particular blocks or streets that we should take a specific look at. I'm happy to do that. I will say, I think we've done a very good job of catch basin inspection changes, as I said in my testimony. And we are increasing our capacity to clean the catch basins. Catch basins fail in two ways. Either they fill up with dirt and leaves and things like that. That requires DEP to go in with a special piece of equipment and scoop out the gunk so that the water can flow in and flow out. What often happens, and what we saw a lot of during the storm of September 29th because it was autumn, is that the catch basins can also fail, even if they're perfectly functioning underground, if they get matted over. And in fact, I know Councilmember Wrestler, I saw an image of him on video going out there like a good citizen and solving a problem with a simple rake or a broom by clearing the catch basin. And pulling that stuff aside.
What a show-off, what a show-off.
You know, I think he was wearing a cape at the time. It was tremendous. And, you know, and so we are, that is the kind of situation. Usually, what happens is that water will subside over a relatively short period of time. And one of the things we did see on that day of September 29th is that water filled up very quickly. And then actually, within an hour or so, in most parts even of Brooklyn, that was hardest hit, it resolved. By the time, sometimes, our trucks got to sites that had been called in, there was no flooding anymore. We are working, number one, as I mentioned in my testimony, we have a new catch basin design that we think will make a big difference in helping those situations. It basically provides a backup catch basin. If the one on street level gets covered over, gets matted over, there's kind of a secondary drain, that that's helpful. And we are rolling that out now. It's a relatively small rollout. How many did we do? 100? Over the last year? We have 160,000 catch basins across the city, so we have to think about how we can accelerate that retrofit. We put a couple on Knickerbocker Avenue and Councilmember Nurse's district, and they got pretty good reviews, although they won't solve the problem for September 29th. And so, and we are also beginning to think about how we reengage with citizens about potentially enlisting people to help us because there is literally no way that DEP or, in fact, the entire city workforce could respond to every matted-over catch basin in the midst of a storm. And so the kind of citizen action, like what Councilmember Wrestler did, is something that we do encourage people to do. There's no safety risk. There's no hazard. There's no specialized equipment with going ahead and doing that. So it's a multifaceted solution, but we've invested a great deal of time and effort into making sure the catch basins work.
Thank you, Commissioner. And also, I'm looking forward, our district also have some new catch basin happening in my district.
I would love to come, walk the streets of your neighborhood with you, and we'll talk about that together.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Okay, so a little sort of council-question politics here. Now, the next member who signed up for question is Councilmember Wrestler. However, my delegation chair, Councilmember Williams has some questions that Councilmember Wrestler is going to ask on her behalf. And so because she's going to get a little extra time, I don't want to get Councilmember Holden and Nurse mad at me. And so we're going to jump over Lincoln, who's always like a really good guy. And I'm going to recognize Councilmember Holden, followed by Councilmember Nurse. And then Councilmember Wrestler will do his questions and some he's going to ask on behalf of my delegation chair, Councilmember Williams. Everybody good with that? Okay, so with that, I recognize Councilmember Holden for questions.
And I want to echo, Lincoln Wrestler is an inspiration to us all. Can we get the stick also from the, how do you open up a catch basin? You have a stick, a certain, does it have a hook on it, or?
Wait, we don't want you to open them. Don't open them. It's just what's on top.
Just want to clear it.
A rake or a broom, that's all, that's all.
Anyway, Commissioner, the mayor's City of Yes is proposing a lot more overdevelopment. And that kind of flies in the face of some of the complaints you've seen or you've heard today. My district floods regularly, as you know. Many other districts in Queens flood. Southern Queens is, and I think Nantasha Williams is going to talk about that, or at least the questions will be directed at that. The water table is very, very high in that area. So there's flooding in a lot of sections. Where does, what about your input on City of Yes? Have you spoken about this and probably some of the neighborhoods that might not work in this plan?
Well, look, from, first of all, I'll say I wear two hats, as you know, in this administration. And as chief climate officer, there is nothing New York City can do for the planet that is more important than expanding our housing capacity. Every single additional person who can live in the five boroughs reduces the global carbon footprint, reduces our impact on the environment. So that is why, first, the City of Yes for carbon neutrality was such a big innovation. And I am so grateful to the city council for enacting that. And I am a full supporter of the current City of Yes package that will be coming to you before too long. From the point of view of DEP, the thing that we are in ongoing conversation with the Department of City Planning on is just making sure that we have constant communication about where they are expecting growth to occur so that we can incorporate that into our sewer capacity investments. That's the main thing. And frankly, I don't, it has been, on occasion, things around small-scale distributed growth, like what is really encompassed in some of the City of Yes proposals. The bigger challenges come from larger-scale rezonings where we have to make sure that our investments are timed so we don't wind up hindering growth.
But the City of Yes is taking residential areas, one- and two-family homes, and actually building units over garages, in the backyards, side yards, which you're going to have more concrete. You're going to have less green. That's being done across the city. It's not just in certain areas, low-rise areas. It's across the city. So it's a one-size-fits-all. As you heard, as you know, flooding is in allotted areas, especially where overdevelopment went, you know, went first. That started it. And so what the councilwoman, both councilwomen said about their neighborhoods flooding, even before the climate change started, really, started to get a lot of rain. We've had a history in my district of, first of all, we don't have the electrical grid. Every time I get a 30 mile an hour wind, we have a blackout. Every single time, almost. So anytime, I got a horrible electric grid, but my sewer system is, again, 30, 40 years behind the time. 25 years from now, we're still, all the projects will not catch up to what we have now. Now, City of Yes is coming and saying we want to put 20, 30, 40% more housing in a particular area. That's already experienced in flooding. And yes, we'll figure it out is not really the answer. It's, we really need you to weigh in and say, this can't handle it. We can't handle the current situation. We cannot, because we're just going to give more flooding to the people now who are suffering. So that's not an answer that, you know, we'll see. We need more housing, and we'll figure it out. It's not, that's not really an answer.
Well, councilmember, look, again, I am fully in support of the City of Yes package that's currently working its way through. I think DEP is perfectly positioned to handle that. And again, I continue to believe that ADUs and other innovations to help ensure that we can alleviate the city's housing crisis are important. And I will point out-
So at any cost, you're saying?
Well, I will point out that the 13 New Yorkers whose lives were lost during Hurricane Ida mostly lived in illegal basement apartments. And this administration has continuously tried to get Albany to help us start the process of legalizing those illegal apartments. That's an indication of how much we need that kind. Those are accessory dwelling units. What we are trying to do here is bring these out of the shadows and into the light, and out of the basements, which tend to be unsafe, and into places where people's lives won't be at risk. I think that's really important.
Right, but again, there is a cost. And the cost is, if the infrastructure is inadequate now, and you're not offering an upgrade in that area, and you want to build 20%, 30% more housing in that particular area without improving the infrastructure, that's a recipe for disaster. That is really questionable. So again, you could support the City of Yes, but there's got to be, you know, carve-outs.
We, well, I don't know about carve-outs, but we have certainly been in conversation with the Department of City Planning about making sure that we are fully aware of where development is expected. We will focus on that. But I also have to point out, and I stress this on a number of occasions, that an increase in the sanitary flow, right? Of people flushing toilets and taking showers in combined sewer locations of the city, which is 2/3 of the city, that is not going to cause flooding, right? Because our sewers are designed for storms. And stormwater, right? I mean, remember that if we get an inch of rain, so our annual daily water consumption- daily water consumption is a billion gallons a day. If we get one inch of rain across the five boroughs, that's 5 billion gallons of rainwater. And our sewers are designed generally to handle between 1.5 and 1.75. So we have built in, in our combined sewer areas, something between five and 10 times the sanitary flow. So the sanitary flow increases from a relatively, I mean, you know, if you, if you quintuple, you know, stuff that happened in Williamsburg and other places, like if you have a doubling, tripling, quadrupling of the population, we have to take that into account. But 20 or 30% is not going to cause flooding. Now, again, I will, I, I say, as I said to both of the, your colleagues who, who asked questions before, we are absolutely focused on what it will take to address flooding in the city. The sad reality is that flooding is going to happen in your neighborhood whether its population stays the same, or goes down, or goes up, until we make progress on our work, until we have the engineers we need to do the work, and until we figure out what it's going to cost and get the capital in our budget.
And again, the infrastructure has to come first, before building. And if you, if that's not something that you recognize, then we're in trouble.
Well, I, I think it's time to, for me to jump in here, because I got some good news for Councilmember Holden, hopefully if we can make this happen. And, you know, the time has elapsed anyway, but I have a bill, Bob, that's currently being drafted, which would mandate that, and this sounds like the kind of thing you're going to want to sign on to, because we've seen it all over, that they, that the Department of City Planning will do an upzoning, the, you know, subterranean, you know, sewer infrastructure is not, you know, prepared for that. And if somebody wants to build a building, then they have to, you know, then, you know, DEP charges them to put infrastructure in the ground. Anyway, just to cut to it, my bill, should it become law, would mandate that the subterranean infrastructure be built out to accommodate, you know, whatever is coming with the new zoning, before the new zoning can actually take effect. Now, of course, we'll be going against the forces that are pushing for City of Yes and whatever, and the administrations for it, and, you know, the leadership of the council, whatever, but I think it's a common sense bill to make sure, it would be a common sense law, that the, you know, that the sewer infrastructure has to be able to handle whatever is envisioned by the new zoning. That's like the crux of what the bill's going to do, and I, I, I think you're going to like that. And, you know, thank you for your good questions, as always, I appreciate that. And with that, I recognize Councilmember Nurse for questions.
Thank you, Chair.
And I trust Councilmember Nurse so well that I can take a little break and, and I don't have to worry that anything is going to happen, because-
Yeah, but here he's not going to go off the rails.
Sandy's got it, okay? So I happily recognize Councilmember Nurse for questions.
Thank you. And I too want to put for the, I want to put on the record that I too have cleaned a catch basement, just not on, just not on camera. But maybe I will. I need to be a better politician.
You get your recall after that.
Oh, oh, thanks, Jim. So I have just some silly questions, because I, the testimony was very comprehensive, and because I've just been on the committee for a while, I feel like I've, I know all the answers that you're saying to some of the questions. But I did have a question about the RFEI on anaerobic digestion, and if you had any major takeaways or things that you've learned from that process, or a general update. And then was wondering if DEP was accessing any IRA or other federal funding.
Thank you, Councilmember. I, I don't have a ton of news to share, but, you know, what, what you're referring to, just so the others on the committee know, last year we put out actually three RFEIs around different aspects of the circular economy, for organics processing, for bio solids reuse, and for biogas capture and reuse. We've taken the responses to them, and we are incorporating them into our plans to expand our role in the circular economy. I'm really excited about that. I, I think the, you know, the couple of takeaways that, that I see is, is that there is real opportunity, right? And, you know, part of the reason we did that is that we needed to make sure that what we understood about the, what the market was interested in was up to date, because the world has really changed on this topic over the last couple of years, as, as you know as well as anybody. So now I think we are well poised for that. As it relates to the IRA, we are very much working on something. We are not yet at a point where I can announce it, but I hope, I hope within weeks, we can say something really positive on that. But we are certainly, you know, as you know, Deputy Mayor Joshi, you know, is tasked by the mayor with leading an effort that Joe leads on behalf of DEP with making sure that we are absolutely maximizing every dollar from the IRA and the BIL that we possibly can, and that is part of our strategy.
Okay. I just have one other question. How has it been going with the new Bureau of Coastal Resiliency and the new DEP Borough Commissioners we've discussed at previous hearings?
Well, the Borough Commissioners, we are, we are well behind schedule, I, I will acknowledge. We did start, I think they posted at the end of last year, help me out, when did they?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so we are in the midst of recruiting for them. We have, we've got, as, as with any recruiting process, for five roles simultaneously, we are a little bit ahead in the process on some than, than others, but we are actively doing that. And we are in fact, my colleague, Beth DeFalco, the Deputy Commissioner for Public Affairs and Communications, is essentially redesigning her bureau around having the presence of these Borough Commissioners. And so I think that'll be a really powerful force later this year when we get them all on board.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much for, just wanted to acknowledge and thank you for all the work you've been doing in, in the Bushwood community, from the little micropilots just coming out, it's been really, you know, it's nice when a city agency is, is actually able to deliver, and it's been really great. So thank you.
I think we're just taking the reins here. Chairman's going to regret it when he gets back. But I, I will say while he's not listening, how much we appreciate Chair Gennaro and his, like, expert and thoughtful leadership of the committee. I was saying nice things about you, Jim.
You, you were starting already?
Well, she was done.
Oh, okay.
I passed it over. I thought that's what the cop drop was about. Giving me the reins.
Because she actually chaired the last committee, you know, because I, I couldn't be here, so now she just acts as chairperson any time she wants. So save me the work. And so like I said, Councilmember Wrestler is going to be, he has his questions and those of Councilmember Williams, and yeah, so I'm back just to gum up the works here, sorry about that, Lincoln, just go get them.
Thank you very much, Chair, I really appreciate it.
Let me just mention that we're joined by Councilmember Aviles. I want to recognize her good presence here, happy to have her.
Thank you.
Once again, sorry for the-
I appreciate it, sir. And I, I really just want to start by echoing Councilmember Nurse's sentiments. We've had a great working relationship with DEP on a range of issues. Most recently, I was thrilled that your team was willing to work with us to relocate an affordable housing development on a water tunnel number three access site in Bed-Stuy, so that we're preserving an amazing community garden while advocating, securing the affordable housing that we need for our community. We've got, we're in the beginning stages on, I hope, really a dynamic green infrastructure projects in McCarran Park that are critically important to our community. The Gateway to Greenpoint project has been in the works since you were in the mayor's office multiple mayors ago, and it's finally coming to fruition, thanks to you and your team's great work. And there are some new, you know, and I appreciate thoughts around how we can strengthen the long-term control plan for Newtown Creek. And, you know, you mentioned, and Councilmember Nurse mentioned, and the importance of keeping our storm drains clear, and we're really excited about the preliminary conversations we've had to encourage more neighbors to be able to adopt a drain, and map that and track that, and think about how we can do a better job of maintaining the drains and our, the storm catch basins in our community are clear. I did, and I will just say, because it was referenced, you know, that the September 29th storm where I was out in South Williamsburg, where much of the Broadway Triangle area was flooded, you know, just this morning, DP was out at Walton and Harrison, working on the catch basins there. And so we really appreciate that, and it makes a difference. I know that these are tough issues to solve for, but we appreciate your responsiveness and your partnership, really across our district. I have a few areas that I was hoping to ask some questions on. I just want to first start with perhaps the most frustrating issue that we've worked on together, which is Newtown Creek, where, you know, National Grid was supposed to deliver a product for us about a decade ago that appears to continue to have problems. I get emails from my constituents on a daily basis that things don't seem to be working well. Can you give us a status update from your standpoint on how things are going and what the path forward is?
Happy to do that. Thank you, Councilmember, and I, I will, you know, reciprocate the thanks. We, we enjoy working with you, and I want to acknowledge particularly on Gateway to Greenpoint and the McCarran Park efforts, the, the great work of Angela Locata, our Deputy Commissioner for Sustainability. So the, the biogas facility at Newtown Creek, another thing, frankly, that dates back to my days in the Bloomberg administration, as you probably know, finally, finally in operation most of the time. It had a really rough first year, and frankly, we had a number of issues with our partners at National Grid over the way they informed us when they had issues. Now, in fairness to them, we are in pretty close contact, we have ironed out protocols for how they have to let us know when things are going wrong. Sometimes things go wrong that are either their scheduled maintenance that has to happen on a piece of infrastructure that handles natural gas, right? I mean, that's obvious. One of the things that has been happening that, that, that we are concerned about is there have been a lot of false alarms being tripped by the various safety sensors, and of course, if something happens, you have to take it deadly seriously. And, and so that led to a disappointing in-service percentage in its first year, and we are just about, maybe almost to the day, at the, the one-year anniversary of its service period. As I said, we have had some frank exchanges of views with our, our partners. We have a new set of protocols, so we are feeling better informed. And one thing we wanted to do, so that your constituents don't have to like take their binoculars out and check the flares, just this week, after, after some really good work by, Jane's not here, by Jane Gudwani and her team and our IT folks, on DEP's website, we now have a real-time status monitor as to whether the biogas system is working. So you can go at any moment to check whether our flare is firing.
That's great.
And within a couple of weeks, we expect also to have a direct feed from National Grid's system. So at least in terms of that kind of transparency, I think we're making a lot of progress. Now, you know, our, and I have, I am personally probably on the phone with National Grid every other week on this topic, Jane is probably on the phone with them every other day. You know, what they are saying is, look, it's, it's a complex piece, kind of first of its kind, it's inevitable that the first year is going to be rocky, don't worry, a year or two is going to be much better. And it's a plausible argument. I think now that we have a better sense of, of how quickly we will know, we will see. Of course, we want to hope for the best, right? We don't want them to fail, we are in a 20-year partnership with them, I don't want to wind up in a position where we wind up having to sue them, or trying to kick them out, or something like that. That's, that's not the right way to go. But, you know, we will see, and we will be critical, because, you know, I think your frustration, we share, I think there's goodwill on that side, but we want to make sure that it is as important to them as it is to the city, because as you know as well as anybody, that is a cornerstone of our circular economy strategy. And if at some point in the future we are going to do biogas capture at other treatment plants, and if we are going to harvest that gas to help buildings comply with Local On 97, and we are going to use it as part of our organics infrastructure, we have to make sure it's working. So that's a top priority for me.
I, I could not agree with you more. I think it was two years ago to the day at our preliminary budget hearing that I blew a gasket on the fact that we were two decades in the making and still didn't have a working product. And Chair Gennaro followed up with me immediately, connected me with senior folks at National Grid. We did bi, you know, bi-monthly calls with them, or twice a month calls with them, throughout, until it got launched, and have been frustrated by the percentage of time that it's actually been in operation. The data I have was about 75% for most of year one. You know, they say they have to, I, I hear you that there are times where they have to bring it offline, but that's a lot lower than we were anticipating, and we've, we have not been getting good responses. I appreciate greater transparency, I appreciate them having better protocols in place for all of us to be able to hold them accountable, and I appreciate that you're continuing to be hands-on and making sure that National Grid takes this as seriously as they need to. I had other questions, but let me go to Nan's, because she asked me to. So, actually, just briefly, I just want to follow up on Councilmember Nurse. Is that okay? One second. I was really excited about the coastal resiliency announcement last year, and, and just have been, it's, it was a little hard in our briefing materials to get a, I think because it's probably a new unit, to get a full understanding. Could you give us a breakdown both of the MOCJ headcount and the coastal resiliency headcount, and for the FY25 adopted budgets, preliminary budget, excuse me?
Yeah, let me, so, so I believe, and I apologize actually to Councilmember Nurse, I, I answered half of your question, not the other half, so I'm glad Councilmember Wrestler picked it back up, because of course, BCR is, is super important. So Lauren joined the team last, hold on, joined the team last fall, and I believe in the preliminary budget, there is literally one line in the Bureau of Coastal Resilience, which is her. That was by design, that was by agreement with OMB when we, when we announced it, because what we asked her to do was come on board and figure out what a structure for, for BCR would be. We also have about 10 sewage treatment workers, are they in a BCR line?
Right now, they're still over in the WT.
BWT, yes. So, so before the Bureau was really set up in the budget, we hired 10 people under the sewage treatment worker, civil service title, and we've started to train them to be the crew that will maintain the floodgates. So in effect, BCR has 11 people, and, and you've got two or three, two people, right? Two. Two people that we've kind of loaned internally, so she's kind of working with a team of three plus this field ops crew of 10. And now that she's had a couple of months, of course, there wasn't enough time between her start date and December's work on the January plan. We are now in discussions with OMB about what BCR should be staffed at. To your point about OMB, we now, we have 43 lines within MOCJ. I apologize, I will have to get back to you with what the current headcount is, there are a number of vacancies at MOCJ.
When you follow up on that, could we also just get a breakdown from FY21 to the present? So we just understand how the agency, the headcount and how many spots are filled?
Yeah, we, we can certainly do that. And of course, as you know, if I'm thinking correctly, in FY21, it was still two offices, right? There was sustainability and resilience, and-
That was the year they merged it, was it not? Ah, it's okay.
We merged it, but, I mean, I, I will, I will certainly, we'll, we'll get you the couple of years' look back, so you can do a reasonable comparison. And, and you know, one of the things we are looking at with the future of BCR is to aggregate some of the roles that the previous mayor's office of resilience had played. We're in an ongoing conversation between DEP and MOCJ around what resilience functions remain at MOCJ. Inevitably, there are some that are cross-cutting that you really want in the mayor's office, there are a lot that you probably want in the operating agency. And so there might be some movement back and forth, but also, for example, you know, until BCR was created, it was actually assumed that DOT would take over the maintenance of Esker. Those lines at DOT were never funded, and so the conversation right now is even though it was always kind of an outstanding liability for the city in the future, we are now working with OMB to, to get those things funded.
And I'll, I'll, I'll just jump in for a second, because of course, the, you know, Mayor Bloomberg had established the Office of Long-Term Planning and Sustainability. the Office of Long-Term Planning and Sustainability. And I thought it was a good idea that that be put in law for, you know, perpetuity, and I added resilience to that, because heretofore there was not a resilience office. So, the parsing of how the resilience, or, you know, resiliency, or whatever you want to call it, gets done either through the Office of Resiliency, that's part of the merrility that I set up in law. Do we have to do a law to kind of figure that out, to kind of make sure that the new Bureau at D E P is fully consistent with prior local law, which puts it in the Mayor's Office?
Councilmember, I'll take another look. I don't, or, Mr. Chairman, I don't think there is any inconsistency, just because, you know, as is appropriate, laws like that are generally written with some vagueness and discretion. But I will say that I think we may be coming to you this year with a request to formalize coastal resilience as part of D E P's mission.
You could generally, it's my way, so to speak, when I see something good, and it's working, is to, you know, do the Hollywood Walk of Fame kind of thing, where it's in concrete, and like, that's the way it is. And so that successive administrations come along, and they want to like shuffle the deck, and sorry, it's the law, you know. If they want to change the law, they can try, you know, but that's, you know.
Happy to stick my hand in cement with you.
Yeah, if it works, let's just crystallize it and have that be the way it is.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And I would be eager to co-prime such legislation and support it with you. I think it's a great idea. Just on behalf of Councilmember Williams, I think we all know that, you know, you heard from everybody complaining about flooding and concerns in their district, but Southeast Queens is without a doubt ground zero. Councilmember Williams wrote a letter with every single city, state, and federal elected official representing Southeast Queens in January of this year, asking D E P and D E C to begin quarterly public meetings starting in May of 2024 about how joint city and state action can help address the groundwater flooding issue, which I believe, according to Councilmember Williams, and who cites the U.S. Geological Survey data, groundwater table in Southeast Queens was 40 feet higher in 2013 compared to its lowest levels in the 70s and 80s. Her office has followed up since the letter was sent in February and March, and is hoping for an official response in writing. But I think seeking any information today about D E P's plans to work with D E C and the Southeast Queens delegation to begin addressing the issues caused by the end of groundwater pumping in the Southeast Queens community. She's seeking a commitment from D E P today to participate in these quarterly public meetings with D E C, starting in two months.
Thank you, Councilmember. Look, groundwater, first of all, I need to point out, groundwater is an issue increasingly across the city and around the country. One of the things we are seeing is that as sea level rises, that pushes water underground, and so coastal communities across the board are seeing their water tables go up. We've done several things on this issue over the last, over the last year, year and a half. The first is, I think we finally registered the USGS, or not yet?
Saturday, November.
Saturday, fifth. So last month, we started with the U.S. Geological Survey, where we, and inevitably, it took us a year to do the contract, but we got it done, where we are working with them to do a comprehensive set of drills, of wells, to drill a comprehensive set of wells across the city, so we can start measuring where the water table is across New York. We do not have reliable data on that across the city, and we need that. The other thing that we've done, I know many of her constituents have argued that, well, D E P just needs to restart the wells. And so, you know, I'm sure you know this context, but until the late 1990s, we had the Jamaica Water Supply, and we were using the underground water. Those pumps have been in mothballs since the late 1990s, and under Tasso's leadership, we took a close look this year at what it would take to restart them. It's very bad news, because I know many of her constituents think that all we need to do is flip the switch, pay the power cost, and all of a sudden, we can drain out.
If I could just jump in for a second, I was talking to my legislative director when I missed that. So when you say, start them up again, you mean start them up again just for the sake of reducing the water table and pumping them away? You don't mean start them up again to put them into the.
Correct. No, we would not imagine anybody wants to drink that water compared to good Delaware water.
So we just started them up for the sake of.
Well, let me be clear. That was the idea that a number of the residents and advocates in that neighborhood have been arguing for. Now, for the same reason that, reading between the lines, I'm going to hear you saying, you don't want to drink that water, right? One of the things we've found is, it's polluted enough that we can't just pull it out and dump it into Jamaica Bay, or even into the ocean, right? We would have to treat it. And the pump stations, having been unused for nearly 30 years at this point, cannot just be restarted. We do not have a final cost estimate. We will work towards a closer one, and of course, it requires a conversation with D E C, because any systematic groundwater pumping and dumping of groundwater will require D E C permits. But the cost of restarting the pump stations is between, somewhere between 500 million and $1 billion. Not only do we think we would have to basically build new pump stations, but if we have to treat these through a, treat this water through a traditional wastewater treatment plant, our Jamaica wastewater treatment facility cannot handle it. And so there would have to be an expansion or some other facility created to do that treatment. One of the things that has led us to do, and we reached out a couple of weeks ago to the Queensborough President's Office, is we really have to start understanding the scope of this problem. There are homes across New York City, across Long Island, across everywhere, where you have basement flooding, right, and groundwater intrusion. And, you know, and the thing we have to think about is whether the scope of this problem, first in that neighborhood, and then frankly, across the city, is one where a large-scale systematic solution, like, I mean, we're talking about geoengineering here, right? We're talking about intervening to change the earth for the convenience of our buildings, and that kind of effort to lower the water table, not to mention the E I S, we would probably have to do for that. We have to think about what it actually protects. Right now, we have actually only been able to get a list of 60 addresses that the Borough President's Office tells us they have self-identified as having a problem with groundwater flooding. We, a couple of years ago, D E P tried literally going door-to-door in some of the affected neighborhoods, and most people refused to answer questions. It is entirely possible that we have some illegal basement apartments, or other things like that, which lead residents not to want to engage with the city, which is why we reached out to the Borough President's Office for his help in maybe helping us quantify this problem. But as you can imagine, if we're going to think about a 500 to, 500 million to $1 billion problem, if it's really only 60 homes, it's going to be far more logical to do that on a home-by-home, sump-pump, French drain-in-the-basement kind of solution than to do the geoengineering. The other thing we have to look at, and this is what this USGS data will begin help us understand, helping us understand, is, is this really just a Southeast Queens problem? Or is this something that's been happening citywide? And, you know, anecdotally, I mean, in, you know, Red Hook, you're constituent, you have Red Hook, right? No, who's got, oh, Councilmember, of course, you've got Red Hook. Your constituent, my Deputy Commissioner, has groundwater in her basement on a regular basis. I talk to her. So, you know, so we know that that's, that is not just a Southeast Queens thing. So the bottom line is, we are taking this issue seriously. However, I think people have to appreciate, there is no easy panacea for this. And so we will work in earnest, but huge sums of money to solve undefined problems, we have to be thoughtful before we move on them.
Totally hear all that. And Councilmember Williams, I think, has a number of suggestions and ideas for how to potentially help. Is there a timeframe by which you plan to respond to the letter from January?
We have a draft. We have not actually worked in coordination with D E C on this. So we're going to answer on our own behalf first. We'll see what D E C says, and then we will figure out how to work together.
Appreciate. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. It is my privilege to recognize Councilmember Aviles for questions.
Hello. Thank you so much, Chair. Thank you to D E P for being here. I think earlier, we've talked a lot about flooding, so we're going to go back on topic. As you know, Commissioner, I represent District 38, which includes Red Hook and Sunset Park. We have seen increasing sewer backup complaints rise quite significantly. And we're on track to have nearly 38% increase in sewer backup complaints. This is truly a significant issue in our district, and with portions of our industrial waterfront also experiencing flooding and sewage in the streets anytime there's a rainstorm. I'd like to hear more about it, and forgive me if you've already covered this, but how does D E P plan to address this issue, particularly in my district? And on Third Avenue, where we have the B Q E overhead, which is additionally raining down its water in addition to all the other water. We haven't seen any discernible investment in addressing this issue, particularly in Third and Second Avenue. Well, let's, all over the district, it's a problem. But let's talk particularly about Third Avenue, where my residents have been trying to address this issue, and quite frankly, extremely frustrated, where you will hear some direct testimony later, what the agency is doing to address these issues.
All right. Well, Councilmember, first of all, and it is true, we talked a little bit about this before you arrived, so just to recap, 20, so you're referring to the P M M R results that compare the first four months of fiscal year '24, which is basically the latter half of calendar year '23, with the first four months of fiscal year '23, which is basically the last several months of 2022. The significant uptick is directly a result of the fact that 2022 was a drought year. We had an extraordinarily dry summer, and in fact, most of the state of New York, happily not New York City because of our reservoir system, but most of the state of New York was under drought, under drought restrictions. 2023 was, September of 2023 was the second wettest September in New York City's history, right? And when we have massive rainstorms, particularly like the one on September 29th, which particularly affected the northern part of Brooklyn and a lot of your district, that will inevitably lead to a significant rise. So, we actually don't believe yet that this is necessarily indicative of a permanent trend, so I don't fully agree with the projection of where we will end up this year. It is highly dependent on the weather. We do have a number of investments going on in your district, and I can get back to you with them. And I have to tell you, I don't know, I don't know it well enough to know what the situation on Third is, but I'm happy to visit and walk the streets with you.
Yes, we definitely would like to arrange that, and in fact, have been in conversation with staff. I'd love to know if the agency can provide us with the complaints that it has seen in terms of sewer overflow, and from 49th Street to 51st Street, from Second Avenue to Third Avenue, including both sides of that, of Third Avenue, which is quite wide. And I'd love to see it over a very long period of time. I don't know how long the agency tracks this. And part of the long timeframe is because this, if you talk to any resident on those streets, they will tell you this persistent issue has persisted over 15 years, and they have not seen any investment. So I guess, along those lines, are really addressing the challenges in earnest, and with climate change, it's only getting worse. In terms of, how does D E P address the issue when homeowners are in charge of repairing their portion of their connection to the sewer line? When the city is neglecting its investment in streets, and the streets are collapsing because they are hollow, we also suffer from a good number of sinkholes, how is it that homeowners are on the hook for the fact that the city hasn't invested in these streets, and we're allowing them to collapse? Because putting in asphalt into a hole is a temporary solution for a couple of months, and then we have the same pothole there. And it's affecting homeowners, and then we're asking homeowners to pay bills for their portions of sewer lines that are being collapsed, because the whole street is collapsing anyway. I'm trying to figure out, like, where does the responsibility of the city lie here when the streets are collapsing?
Well, Councilmember, look, I will, I would be happy to explore that topic with you further. It is a little bit contrary to my understanding, and so we should, we should discuss it. The way I understand it is, if a failure in the city's infrastructure damages private property, no matter what the situation, then the city will be liable, right? And a homeowner in that circumstance should be filing a controller claim to seek damages. And if it is, in fact, due to a lack of maintenance of city infrastructure, then the controller will find in favor of the homeowner and pay the claim. The other thing I will point out, and unfortunately, I do see this, right? We see this all the time, that frankly, people don't think about the fact that they own the entire service connection to the water main, that entire pipe out to where the water main is, and the sewer line out to, out to the sewer in the street. We have a program, which I wish more people would take advantage of, which is the service line insurance program. We actually updated it this year, so it'll run for another nearly five years. You know, generally, this insurance company that we partner with gets very good reviews for its timeliness, its responsiveness, its claims. As part of the negotiation, where we took advantage of the contract's ability for us to extend it, we negotiated a number of improvements. So the coverage is now more comprehensive. It covers some things that had been the main source of disputes over the last many years. It also includes, and Councilmember Gennaro and Councilmember Holden, you particularly would probably appreciate this, we've had a number of issues where, not that many, but occasionally, we have issues where somebody's service line or sewer line has to be replaced, and a tree has to get cut down, and then you have to pay the tree restitution, which can be very expensive. We now have a fund to cover that, so that that doesn't get in the way of helping the homeowner. And it is, what is it, $18 a month?
It's up to $21.99, I believe, with the change.
Okay. Isn't that tier two?
We'll have to get back.
Okay, well, I'll get back to you. But it's roughly $20 a month. And, you know, when a service line needs to be repaired, that can be between $10,000 and $20,000. So we really recommend that people take it. You can opt into it. It's an opt-in program. It comes on your water bill, so it's very easy to pay. And something on the order of 250,000 New York City households already subscribe to this. And we are going to be doing, the chairman has it, we are going to be doing some advertising, happily funded by our partner, so not using water rate money to make, to make ratepayers aware of this, because we think that is the kind of thing that can help. We do unfortunately see a lot of times, when it's bad news, it falls on the homeowner, because that's the law. And, you know, there really is nothing we can do to help, but if people sign up for that insurance, they are protected.
Well, I'd love to thank you for that. I'd love to get, I'd love to do some outreach in our community to make sure homeowners know, but make sure you come with materials that are translated in multiple languages. Don't show up to District 38 without it.
You will be pleased that part of our negotiation this year included ensuring that, was it all 10?
Yes.
That, that our partner will be translating all of their materials into all 10 of our New York City languages.
Fantastic.
$18.99 per month.
For the record. Thank you. I, I appreciate that. I could, I guess I just would like to ask, definitely would like to set up a walkthrough in our community to look at persistent issues. What are the, what are the tools that DEP provides in this context of sinkholes and sinking streets?
Well, so.
And you know, we're an industrial waterfront community, which means we have a lot of signs that say, don't, don't, trucks are not allowed on this block. And then you see nothing but tractor trailers running up and down the block. So this is part of the issue. We don't have any design, designed mechanisms to stop those trucks. So the truth, the truth of the matter is, in an industrial community, we're overrun by trucks and none of these streets can sustain that and they're all sinking. And we, I need to know what systematic assessment are we doing of these streets so that we don't have residents and their cars and trucks falling into the ground?
And I, I'll just say that the time has expired, but I'm happy to give the Councilmember a little latitude on this very important question.
Thank you, Chair.
So Councilmember, so I, I will point out, sinkholes happen for a variety of reasons, some of which fall to DEP to address and many of which do not. So if a sinkhole is caused by a leaking water main or a sewer main, then of course we address it. And, you know, that is where the work that our Bureau of Water and Sewer Operations has done with these pipe doctors and to address water main breaks and find leaks before they have a problem. And basically we have, the, the two most common emergency calls we get are either a sinkhole, which is a water main break that hasn't really burst out onto the top, or a water main break where, where it goes straight. Those fall to us and I, you know, realistically, I think the path we are on, thanks to Deputy Mayor Joshi's advocacy and support from OMB, we've been able to expand that pipe listening technology, which started out just in Manhattan. It's now a five borough effort, so I'm really proud of that. That just started last year. So we'll, we'll really see the first fruits of that in Brooklyn and Queens and, and the Bronx over the next year or two. So that's, that's, I think, the main strategy for us. And, you know, for the other structural issues, I fear I have to defer to my colleagues at DOT and DDC. But I, I will say, wearing both my, my DEP hat and from the perspective of the chief climate role, we made a commitment in Plan YC last year also to look into a low emission zone. And one of the two places, we said that Hunts Point and Red Hook, or Red Hook Sunset Park, were actually the two places where we thought that would be appropriate to start. And low emission zones are an approach, LA has done a version, London has done the most aggressive one, where it basically singles out high emission vehicles and charges them or requires different activity from them. And what we see, you know, London has applied this really for all sorts of vehicles in its central city. But, but our perspective was that in New York, if we're going to take this approach, we really needed to address these hubs, particularly of the distribution centers, that have gotten so heavily concentrated in places like Red Hook and Sunset Park and the South Bronx. That is something that we are actively pursuing. It is a top priority of Deputy Mayor Joshi. She and I talk about it on a probably weekly basis. And it is something that our, my colleague Deputy Commissioner Julie Louven, who runs our Bureau of Environmental Compliance, who's in charge of air enforcement, she's not here today. But our Bureau of Environmental Compliance and MOC EJ are, are working very much on that. And I hope over the next month or two to have some progress to share.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Just talking in the district office as I'm, as I'm here, so I'm here and there. And thank you very much for your good questions, Councilmember. And so now, now I'm, I'm up. For a start, I heard the Commissioner make reference to Angela Locata. Happy to see you. We're buddies a long time and thanks for, thanks for being here. And Rob Citaldo from City Legislative Affairs. I want to shout him out for his good work and I work for the committee. And that gets me off the hook for not responding to his last text message to me. But he's a, he's a great guy. I'm going to walk through the Commissioner's statement where I made some notes as he was reading it to me. And, and then I'll go into other questions. At first is actually to Joe Murant, because I understand that you function also as the Executive Director of the Water Board.
Yes.
Now, you know, you're a DEP employee and, and you're here and we're doing oversight over DEP. I don't want to poke my nose too much into a water board business because they're their own little entity or whatever. But I'm speaking to you as someone who has knowledge of what that entity does. And the mayor this year in the budget asked for, I made a proposal to take a $440 million, you know, rental payment. And I, I won't bore the audience with, with the whole story of the rental payment, which was originally conceived as a way of paying off the pre-1985 DEP general obligation debt. Before, that was back in the days when DEP used to, was online with everyone else to, for, you know, capital monies. And, and then we went to the Water Board, Water Finance Authority construct, where Water Finance Authority goes to Wall Street, borrows money, issues bonds, does whatever. And then, and then it became a fee-for-service thing and meters and all that. And then, then the question was, what do we do with this accumulated pre-1985 general obligation DEP debt? And hence the water, and hence the rental payment was born to pay that down. And that was, the rental payment every year was equal to, this is for everyone's verification, was in, equal to the debt service on the pre-1985 general obligation debt. And that was the, that was what the rental payment was. And so it was that amount or, and this is the Trojan horse that was built into the rental payment, was that it would be the, the, the debt service on the pre-1985 general obligation debt or 15% of the Water Finance Authority debt, whichever level, you know, whichever amount was higher. So during the early years of, of the Bloomberg administration, the lines crossed, so to speak. The pre-1985 geo-debt debt service was lower than 15% of the Water Finance Authority debt. And so what mayors would do, they would take the, they would take the water payment, they would take the rental payment in full. They would pay off the debt service on the pre-1985 debt. And then they would keep the change and put it into the general fund. If I were DEP, I wouldn't like this. Because people are paying their water bill and they are, they are under the assumption that when they pay their water bill, that they're paying for water and sewer operations, not for the Parks Department, the Police Department and all these other, you know. And so now we're in a situation where the pre-1985 general obligation debt is zero. The 15% of the, 15% of the Water Finance Authority debt is 300 million or whatever it is. Something, something about around there. And last year, the mayor didn't ask for a rental payment. That's nice because rental payment is a scam, because there's no pre-1985 debt. It's just, it's just free money that budget directors like to get their hands on. And when this was all happened, I used to work for OMB back in the days in 1985. That's where I worked, in the capital division. And so I knew all about this, knew about, you know, Water Finance Authority. That's going to get DEP capital funding kind of out of our hair. And it's a Trojan horse that's built into this, that someday we're going to make a lot of money off this. And so a lot of giggles, you know, a lot of giggles around, you know, DEP back in the, around, OMB back in those days. But I was new. I didn't have anything to do with this. I was there, but it wasn't me. And, and so, so here we are. So, so the mayor has asked for the full rental payment for FY '25 and wants to kind of do like a reach back because he's asked for 440 million. And if I'm not mistaken, that would be the 300 million full rental payment for the water rate thing yet to happen for FY '25. And he passed the, he missed the opportunity to ask for it in 2024, but he, he's asking for it almost like retroactively or whatever. Is that a fair assessment of what's going on?
Yes.
And is also, if you just say your name for the record, make sure you speak it.
Sure. Yes, Mr. Commissioner. I'm sorry, Chair. Yes, you.
I don't want to be a commissioner. I don't, oh my God.
You summarized it very well. I will say that, you know, the, it is kind of the reverse of what you just said. The rental payment is asked, asked, requested by the city at the end of the year. So we're still in fiscal year 25.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
You know, the remit of the mayor and the budget director to request, you know.
Yeah, but isn't it good if they do that upfront so that when they make the, so when they make the water rates for any particular year, they build in the ability to kind of do that?
And you're correct. And that was the way it worked for many years. We were paying the rental payment on an annual basis. And as you, as you recounted, you know, historically, we went back and reversed that. And, you know, under Mayor de Blasio, it was eliminated. Mayor Adams did, you know, continue that. But as you also know, under Mayor de Blasio, when we did go through the pandemic and when the city was having some financial difficulties, we had the request for the rental payment at that time over two years as well, half value for each of those years.
Okay. So this is not, so this is not unprecedented?
Right. And it's, I think it's more of where this is, we've, you know, cognizant of, you know, the mayor's, you know, responsibility, you know, for a fiscal steward of the city to ensure that there's adequate funding to run all of the operations.
Right. But here's what I'm getting at. So that, that was all, that was all a big preamble. Now everybody's ready. Okay. And so, so if, you know, DEP's annual revenues from water and sewer payments are, you know, a little over $4 billion. So a rate point would be like 40 million.
Roughly.
440 million would be 11 points on the rate.
If it was in just on itself, yes, that would be correct. However, as you're aware, when we go through and do the rate setting processes, many inputs that go in there. We have to look at, how is the revenue looking itself? What are the operating expenses? What are the capital expenses? What other, you know, elements are going on out there? So we're going through that process right now.
Right. But it is, but it is my contention that if 440 million dollars gets paid by the, you know, ratepayers, 440, 440, 440 million dollars for a rental payment, that is ultimately, whether it's in one year or over a couple of years, if that's the way you do it, it's ultimately going to impact, it's ultimately going to jack water and sewer rates by 11 points at some point.
Cumulatively.
Cumulatively, if you. Cumulative. So that is just a stone fact, is that?
And, but I think the nuance being as well, when we were doing this on an annual basis, would have been correct because you would have had to build it in there for that effect. But since we're not doing it on an annual basis and we have other financial, you know, happenings during the course of the year, you may be running, as case in point, we run, we run a vacancy rate. So you may have money left over from the budget because you're not filling all your vacancies. So those all come together.
Yeah, but still, but still 440 million that walks out of the pot and goes into the general fund, that is ultimately going to mean either in one gulp or over several gulps, that's going to have an impact on the water rates to the, you know, to the tune of 11 points. There's just kind of no way out of that.
I, other than I would say, because we do also have, you know, certain carryforward cash that we have in the system, that could help mitigate that as well. Now, that also means we are eating into some of that if we were going to use, you know, just that to fund the rental payment. But then it also gives us the opportunity, if we don't foresee that the rental payment is going to be coming in future years, that we could build up those reserves over time. So we work very closely with OMB, you know, as the, myself as the Executive Director and the Water Board and DEP to make sure, and with the Water Finance Authority on the financing side, to make sure that we're moderating and keeping all of those inputs as conservative or as realistic.
But it, it is also the case that if the 440 million dollars was not taken, then that would be, then all, all these other mechanisms that you're doing about, you know, this money's here, this money's there. You know, that could be used for the system to hold down water rates in the future. So I'm, I'm sticking with, you know, for my, for my, for my own, you know, my own simplistic view of thing is that 440 million dollars is 11 rate points and I'm going with that. And so.
Councilmember, we will do everything we can.
No, 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 this is.
Moderate the impact on the public.
I have.
You are correct that.
I have no doubt.
Mathematically equivalent to an 11% rate hike for one year.
Okay, okay. So I just wanted to do that because that's going to be in the council's response to, you know, the budget. And we're going to have some, you know, I'm, 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 I'm going to see if I can get some traction on that because I, I believe that people, and this is not on DEP, you know, whatsoever. If I, if I were DEP, you know, and I send out water bills, I would like people to know that they're paying for water and sewer and, and, and not money going other places. Nothing to do with DEP. You guys are the good guys. I get it. And so, but I just wanted to establish that on the record. And Joe, thank you for that. You did a, you did a great job. And going through the Commissioner's statement about the Delaware, the bottom of the first page, top of the second page. So there's going to be a, a six-month shutdown. And we, we, we've long known that. And, and just to, a little more about, because the, about how that's going to work. Because if, because the Delaware can, sometimes the Delaware Aqueduct, what is that like? It can be, you know, it could, it could, I don't know what its capacity is, but some, it, it's huge.
Right. So, yeah, so, so the, so across the course of the year, the Delaware Aqueduct supplies about 50% of our total water consumption, the Catskill about 40% and the Croton system about 10% on average. It fluctuates, you know, and we dispatch the reservoirs and those three aqueducts based on a number of factors. Core to the entire program that we've been working on for more than a decade has been planning to make sure that the city's water supply is uninterrupted. And it's actually really, in some ways, exciting because one of the things I have come to fully appreciate is that the really thoughtful work that's gone into that has made our water supply system tremendously robust and resilient. This really is that concept of anti-fragile. We have created a lot of interconnections so that realistically, 15, 20 years ago, we kind of had three separate water systems and they couldn't fully cover for each other. Now we have one and any drop of water from any of our reservoirs can get to anywhere in the city, which gives us the kind of resilience and robustness that we need and that will allow us to get through this six-month period with, we expect, no issues at all.
And so the thing is, I, I would imagine we're going to max out the Catskill capacity, right? That's, that's.
We've got a number, yeah. So we have, we have a number of strategies that, that we will be using. And Catherine, I may ask you to add some further detail. But, you know, while the Delaware itself will be cut off because of an interconnection between the Catskill Aqueduct and the Delaware Aqueduct.
Oh, oh, I see.
We can actually take some of the water from the Delaware reservoirs and put it into the Catskill Aqueduct. The, the pipe, the aqueduct itself, of course, can't take.
Sure, sure.
But if for some reason, for example, there's a problem with water quality or turbidity at the Choctaw Reservoir.
Right. I was going to say, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We can still make use of Cannon's Vale or, or the other Delaware.
Fine. All right.
So that's one thing. And then as, as you know, we put a lot of effort into maximizing the capacity of our Croton filtration plant.
Right.
And so the combination of the Catskill Aqueduct and the Croton filtration plant will get us through the winter. So one of the reasons we will do this over the course of the winter when average daily consumption is. consumption is significantly lower than the summer. But we're pretty confident.
Yeah, okay. Well, what, you know, now that I know now, what I didn't know is that, you know, we have the ability to take water, um, from the, you know, Delaware system and, and get it to faucets down here. And so, I'm not, I'm not worried at all now. And so, I'm so relaxed. And page three, the middle of the page, um, about the lead service lines, lead and copper rule, um, and now you did indicate that, um, yeah, I make these little cryptic notes Now, the financing for that, you did indicate later on was going to be, was going to bear the bulk. And then, oh, here's what I wanted, about New York State arbitrarily restricting New York City to twenty-four million dollars. Is that state money or are they allocating federal funds?
This is all federal money under the bipartisan infrastructure law that the states are in charge of distributing. And, uh, you know, we were quite frustrated. We, we responded to the, uh, the competitive, um, the competitive opportunity. According to the criteria, we scored at the top of the proposals. We were expecting we would get a hundred percent of what we asked for. And then the state decided they were going to impose a new rule that said no municipality can get more than twenty-five percent of the pot. And they gave us a haircut.
And we are kind of helpless to flex on them or whatever. It's not like.
You know, we have been, as you know, I have been outspoken about this. We've had support from Congresswoman Meng, Congresswoman Velazquez, Congresswoman Malia Takas. The state has been somewhat immovable on this.
Yeah, because if the, if the money's coming from the feds, and so I guess, yeah, so that was a good move going to, going to members of Congress saying this is money that you folks allocated and the state is, um, you know, doing things with the money that, um, is creating these like, you know, arbitrary rules.
That's right. And the Congress members in their, in their, it was an op-ed that they wrote, they were very clear that, at least from the perspective of those three members, this has, this is not consistent with congressional intent.
Right. Any role for me on this? Nobody cares, right?
And look, it is always helpful. I know you, you and your colleagues have mentioned this in resolutions in the past.
Right.
You know, anything we can do to make sure that the state government knows that New York City needs its fair share across the board would be helpful.
Right. Should I call Shams?
Trust me, I talk to him all the time and he's doing everything he can.
Right, I'm just saying, I don't know if, I mean, he used to work for me.
I know.
And so, he's their Albany guy. The D V is Albany guy. So, just a note to Naby that I should call Shams Tarek and just see what he thinks and whatever. I don't know. I just feel like I want, and I'm not making a joke. I feel like I.
No, I appreciate it.
I mean, he has some, he's up in Albany, knows what the heck is going on. And, um, you know, maybe has some name he could come up with that I could call the governor that would like get her sufficiently, um, don't, don't say that, you know, but I'll, plus I haven't talked to him since he, since he took on the job anyways. Because it just like irks me. And I know it irks everybody and it's just, it's just not fair. Now, this, the, when they do that, it doesn't, this is the second floor, right? It's not T E, it's not, it's not DEC, right?
It's, uh, so technically, it is the Environmental Facilities Corporation that makes the decision. EFC is kind of a joint operation between the Department of Health and DEC. I would imagine the governor's office is a participant in this kind of decision-making, but I couldn't say.
Yep, okay. And we already, uh, we already mentioned about the, about, um, Lorian Farrell and, and the new coastal resiliency. I mean, do you mind if I put in an LS request to do this? Then we do it at the appropriate point. I would just like, I would just like to be the one to do it. And so, I just want to put in the.
Always happy to work with you to enshrine good ideas and logic.
Yeah, okay. So, Naby already knows to do that. We talked about, we're going to do that right after this meeting. In the Cloud Burst Project section of your testimony, selected and are waiting an award for a hundred and twenty-three million for Cloud Burst, is that, is that, is that federal money?
It is all federal, right? Yes.
Okay. But you've already, um, you know, nothing I could do to help with that, right? That's a competitive federal thing and, yeah, okay.
No, I think we're good. Generally, we've had very good support in terms of getting, uh, you know, the standard letters of support from the relevant electeds and where each of these projects is noted. So, thank you for the input.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're going along in a great clip here. Remember, I said I got to cut fifteen minutes off the hearing because I was late. And so, um, not going to do that. Yeah, we kind of covered, as I'm going through this, I see that my colleagues have already covered some of these questions. When it comes to the DEP police, you indicated that there was a significant vacancy rate among officers. I'm just curious what that rate is.
And the unfortunate reality is that the salaries at the DEP police force are significantly below those of other police forces.
So, they get cherry picked as soon as they get trained.
We lose a lot of people to other police forces upstate.
and, and, as they've been thought to making their pay more competitive or whatever with other local police forces or, that's another budget thing.
I mean, there are, hey, look, as, as you well know, under the city government, city agency heads do not really have a significant role in negotiating labor settlements. So, there was an arbitration process that finally got there. They were actually two contracts out of date. We finally got them into a current contract, which is good.
Right.
That's right, right? A current contract. We did both. And so, you know, hopefully we'll see some positive benefit from the fact that now there is a new salary that is still, that is higher than it was. And a number of our officers are going to get back pay. But at the same time, there have been changes in state law that actually make it easier for police departments to poach from each other across the state, every, including PD.
Right.
And we've already, that took effect in October and we are already seeing the impacts of that.
Now, when they get trained, do they have their own, oh, okay, yes, you mentioned that they have their academy is in Kingston, so they don't train with the cops down here.
No, we train them upstate.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's still a gold standard, like, training.
We're very proud of our police.
And so, if the headcount is two hundred, what would, like, what would a full deployment be?
It's two twenty-two. Sorry, it's, Mr. Chair, it's two hundred and twenty-two, we have one hundred and eighty-two on board.
Oh, so it's two hundred and twenty-two and you have one hundred and eighty-two.
For the officers, yes.
On board. But you got a class coming in.
Yes, exactly.
All right, that covers my statement, or covers your statement. Now, I have questions here. I'll try. I'm going to do this more often, have councilmembers ask questions for me because I ask a lot of the stuff that I was going to ask. Okay, and here's one. I'll just read it verbatim. The November plan included reductions to M O C E J for a total savings of four-point-one million in FY twenty-four. And, well, that probably means FY twenty-five. And two-point-five million in the out years. That's the narrative. The question, first question, what programs slash reports were delayed or downsized as a product of this peg? So, what was the impact of the, of that?
Happy to share. That was a, that was a combination of a couple of things. I don't think there's any significant impact and, in fact, some of it is a, is a benefit to the public. So, a couple of these were about timing issues. So, for example, our environmental justice report is behind schedule. We've been working very closely with our environmental justice committee. So, I think they're all fully aware of, of the reasons why. And I'm very pleased. We expect it to come out next month and I'm, I'm really pleased with the content. But as a result, there was money built into the budget that we're not going to be spending this year, so it's been pushed into the out years. In one case, for example, we renegotiated our contract with the New York City Accelerator and a couple of other service providers to get the same service that we need at a lower cost. So, there's some genuine cost savings there. And a couple of things were actually completed at less than anticipated cost, including the urban agriculture study.
Okay. I have a sub-question under that heading of, what is the total headcount and vacancy rate in M O C E J?
So, we have, yeah, so we have thirty-two staff on board. I'm sorry, I didn't see. I had that number when Councilmember Ressler. So, forty-three in the budget, thirty-two on board. So, that is about, I guess, a twenty-five percent vacancy rate.
Is that, is that, is there a plan for that? Are we going to keep it like that or?
Well, look, so, um, a couple of factors here. As you know, M O C E J is, is kind of a cobbled-together staff of lines on a number of different agencies. Some of the staff, and I don't know if we have the, the numbers at hand, but some of them are on mayor's office lines, some of them are on decast lines, a lot of them are on DEP lines. Because DEP worked very hard back in the fall to get agreement from OMB that we got exempted relatively quickly from the hiring freeze, there's been some hiring that M O C E J has been able to do on its DEP-funded lines.
Right.
But the hiring freeze that, as you know, was only lifted weeks ago.
Right.
Froze all of its non-DEP lines. And so, a lot of those vacancies were stuck. We are currently in discussion with OMB on which ones we can now move forward with.
Okay. Thank you. And that question, the answer you just gave answered my next question. Oh, okay. The preliminary, this is capital stuff. The preliminary capital commitment plan for DEP for FY twenty-four to twenty-twenty-eight totals fifteen-point-eight billion, call it sixteen. First question, the preliminary capital plan includes one-point-eight billion for the Kensico Eastview Connection. Can you please provide an update on this project and the estimated completion time for this project? And I guess my implication, what is it?
Sure, I can, I can start and Catherine, maybe you can pick up if there's anything you should add. So, um, previously, so if you go back twenty years, there were two connections between the Kensico Reservoir, which is where our Catskill and Delaware reservoirs all combine, down to Hillview Reservoir, which is the final storage and treatment point before it enters the distribution.
But something used to bypass Kensico and go right to Hillview.
Well, we can, we could bypass, and we still have the ability to bypass the reservoir, but as part of the FAD, we built in twenty-fourteen the ultraviolet plant.
Right.
Right? And so, now, before any water leaves Kensico to go to Hillview, it has to go through the ultraviolet treatment.
Right, right, right.
When the UV plant was built, there was only one connection from the reservoir to the UV plant. And so, that is the single point of failure. It's the only single point of failure in the water supply system. And this project will create a second connection to a different part of Kensico Reservoir, which gives us a lot of flexibility, a lot of reasons. If one part of the reservoir has a turbidity issue, for example, or something, and the other one doesn't, we can dispatch differently.
So, you built this big wall in the middle of it so it separates it.
That's, that's a Chocan and Hillview. We don't have a weir at Kensico, do we?
No, I thought it was, I thought it was, oh, no, 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 I meant, um.
You're thinking about Hillview. Hillview has a weir.
I meant Hillview.
Chocan has a very prominent weir.
Okay.
But in any case, no, Kensico doesn't. But nonetheless, it's such a big reservoir, there can be variability from one side to another. And so, K E C will build that second tunnel with a, a full capacity. So, when it is under construction, we can either get all of our water from the, the existing connection, we can get all of our water from the new connection, we could get from both. The plant is designed to handle two inputs. And of course, not only does that give us great resilience with respect to dispatching different parts of the Kensico Reservoir, but of course, it allows us to take one of those tunnels out of service to do long-term maintenance that, you know, we haven't had to do with a ten-year-old facility, but after twenty, fifty, a hundred years, you have to be able to get in there.
Sure. Okay. let me jump down on a couple of questions. The preliminary capital plan includes four-hundred-and-thirty-five, four-hundred-and-thirty-seven million to upgrade the chambers of the Hillview Reservoir. We were just talking about that. Can you provide an update on this project and the estimated completion for the project? And then, I also, let me just put in there, the, the thirty-year saga over the, the, the cover of the Hillview Reservoir. We, we, we come, I was, my hair was much fuller, my waist was a lot thinner when we first started talking, when I first started as an analyst at the committee in, in nineteen-ninety. Hillview, the cover was, was an issue in nineteen-ninety. And so, where are things at with that? And what's this other thing that I just asked about, about the chambers?
So, this is one of the, so.
This is where, where the, we shook hands with the heads and then we didn't shake hands, then we shook hands again and.
Well, so, we are operating in Hillview under a consent decree that requires us by twenty-forty?
Twenty-forty-five, maybe?
Twenty-forty-five to complete a cover at Hillview. We have agreed with the Department of Justice, which is actually the lead agency, not EPA, on, on this consent decree because the feds sued us. And, uh, and the first major project that we have to do on the road to get to a cover is this reconstruction of the treatment chambers at Hillview. So, that went out to bid a couple of months ago. We received bids. Unfortunately, this is a project where we have now started to see the rising cost of construction.
Right.
Uh, and so, the bids came back a bit higher than expected and, and we've been working with the successful bidder to understand that. But we are still expecting to move forward with this project early in FY twenty-five.
And, and we're all, and, and, and it's all worked out. There's like no more drama about is it going to happen, is it going to, it's all, it's all done.
I, I think there's no drama. We are also, and this is consistent with the consent decree, we are going through a process of thinking about what a cover at Hillview might mean, right? You could imagine a giant concrete dome, you could imagine something that's flexible, you could imagine.
Right, because back in the day. Because, you know, once upon a time, it was, um, it was sort of like a floating cover and it was like one-tenth, like the cost of like a, a concrete cover with like a reflecting pool on top and.
We, we, we have a, we have a project going on right now that is trying to assess what the different options are. Hopefully, we'll have more to report on that over the coming year.
Got that. And this is, um, you know, this is something that, step in here, this is a question I get when I go around Queens and you, you've heard me say this before, um, although. Although I didn't ask for this question to be put in here, so I don't want to be the bad guy here. So as many people know, currently Southeast Queens does not have a full build-out of storm sewers. And, you know, while there are lots of plans to do a lot of projects, I don't think anything exists now that there is an actual plan that resides someplace in D E P as to when the residents of Southeast Queens can expect a full build-out of storm sewers, like the entire network to have that whole area covered by storm sewers. Just a, just a piece of paper somewhere.
We don't really have the, the end date. This is a long-term project and there's no way around it. It is funded at the, oh, 2.5 billion? 2.6 billion in our 10-year capital plan and that's pretty even. So roughly a quarter billion dollars a year for the next 10 years. And we've spent, we've been spending at about that rate for the last 10 years. 800 million over the last number of years since it started. You know, one of the things that we have to remember is.
It's just that folks want to know when, you know what I mean?
And the reality is the last ones will be a long time away. But what we are focused on, and it is exactly the right thing to do. First, we have to build the trunks. As you know, the sewer system works like, like trees, right? You can't build the little branch on the small residential street until you build the big trunk main that all of it feeds into. That's been the priority thus far. And that should allow us to do more in an accelerating way over time. But we've still got to get that, that core network done.
Okay. Let it be noted that I let the commissioner off easy on that one, so. Yeah, you're welcome, you're welcome. Okay, I did all the, did all the water rate stuff. Oh, let's have some fun now. Does the, we've talked about this and so now you're all going to be in on it. Does the department have any capital planning directed towards D E P ultimately at some future date, selling water to Nassau County? Let's have a little fun.
We do not, that I know of, have any planning underway to sell water to Nassau County. As you know, Mr. Chairman, the state did a study that was released a year and a half ago or so, exploring the feasibility of Nassau County tapping into the New York City water supply.
Oh, I wasn't even aware of that.
I thought, I thought it was something that you had inaugurated during.
Well, I did the whole, when I was at D E C, I did the whole groundwater aquifer studies. Was that part of that?
I don't know. I had merely attributed it to you in my mind.
It could have been my idea.
I'm sure it was, I'm sure it was.
Well, because when I was at D E C and they, you know, you know, like the way they ran like water operations in Nassau was like, it was like, you know, it was like running a candy store, you know, just like where, you know, it's like something happens, oh, like what happened? Is it Perk, is it Freon, is it whatever? And all these local water supplies and let's just do a comprehensive groundwater study where we know where various plumes are that we may not know and just, so we just have a sense of what's going on down there and not wait for something to go sideways and then all scramble and figure it out. And so that we're going to, but I, and then I left and then, so maybe this was, this was part of that. So.
Well, so a couple of, a couple of things I at least took away from that study and, you know, invite Tassos to tell me if there are other things I should point out. But, you know, the study pointed out that right now, our distribution system would not be able to provide sufficient supply at sufficient pressure to Nassau County. In our long-term planning, there is, and frankly, we're thinking about rebranding it, but the notion of a city tunnel four that would connect the southeastern part of the Bronx directly into Eastern Queens. And a project like that.
Southeastern part of the Bronx.
Yeah, so imagine the White Stone Bridge.
Right, okay, yeah, yeah.
So something under the, roughly the White Stone or the Throggs Neck Bridge, right? Connecting up from Hillview reservoir and going into Eastern Queens at a large capacity. It's something we want to do anyway to ensure we have full redundancy for Eastern Queens. But that would be absolutely necessary before we could imagine providing any real volume of water to Nassau County. The study concluded that absent that, we could provide a very small amount, but it really was negligible. The other thing that the study interestingly noted and, you know, frankly, I, never having lived in Nassau County, I didn't fully appreciate it, is that Nassau County does not fluoridate its water and we do. And so the people of Nassau County would have to be willing to take fluoridated water because we fluoridate upstate.
Yeah, and that would be good for them. But, but state legislature gave local jurisdictions the ability to legislate fluoridation policy. When I first started as a policy analyst for this committee in 1990, I would get all the fluoridation people and they would come at me. And I'd say, look, you know, this is determined by the, by the Board of Health. The council can't legislate the Board of Health and we don't have the ability to legislate that. And then the, and then the, and then we, this, every local jurisdiction was given the ability to legislate fluoridation policy and all the tinfoil hat people descended upon Suffolk County and Nassau County, got them to kind of buy into the whole fluoridation is evil. And, and then I had to deal with them because we could indeed, you know, do what they wanted. And tinfoil hat thing is kind of like a pejorative in case people don't, you know, know that or whatever. And yeah, and so now you have your, is that? Thank you. Am I, am I starting here? Okay, fine. Silence came over the room when I talked about the fluoridation people, but you didn't have to sit toe-to-toe with them and like go through all their like stuff. Yeah, it was, it was a whole like thing. Yeah, it was, it was. I should read the narrative for the question first, though, right? The preliminary mayor's management report was released last month and there are some areas in which the department has not reached certain benchmarks. A, the percentage of samples testing positive for coliform bacteria was, is this in the distribution system? Yeah. The percentage of samples, I guess, when it, when you do the testing of the, of the distributions, the percentage of samples testing positive for coliform bacteria was only half a percent in fiscal 2023, but increased to 2.13% in the first four months of FY24. You know, why the increase? So, so the question is about, we have more hits on coliform in the, in the distribution system?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first of all, I have to stress to you, we've got to compare apples to apples, right? So coliform bacteria, like many aspects of the water system, varies with temperature and ambient conditions. And so to compare a full year average with four months that are generally hot months is not appropriate, right? And so I will say, you know, if you look at the, at the P M M R, the correct benchmark is 2.13 to 1.41 for the same period last year. That is a much smaller variance. And as the weather got cooler, I will expect that, and, you know, I get daily reports on, on our coliform testing. I've seen nothing to indicate that we will be in a bad spot. And then the increase in significant rainstorm, as we've discussed in the past, I've testified in the past. One of the issues, one of the other issues related to climate change that we face is when we get massive storms, like these very intense storms that we had a lot of in 2023 and not that many of in 2022, in addition to the flooding it causes in the city, it also washes a lot of stuff into our, into our reservoirs. And so while we do all the treatment and, and by the way, the benchmark is 5%. So we're still well below any safety concern, but that is what is going on. And again, I think it will revert back to more or less an average of well below 1%.
And speaking about stuff, you know, going into the water supply in heavy storms, you know, it affects the sewer system, it also washes into the, into the reservoirs, which leads me to my next point. The FAD. You know, we had talked recently, you know, we've had the FAD for a long time. It's worked well, we've done wonders. There was a 97, you know, filtration void, you know, the whole handshake that, 97. And then it was, then it was five-year FAD, then the next five years, and then it was 10. And it went from EPA having primacy, which they held on to for a long time, and then the State Health Department or whatever. And it's only, I guess, natural to think of, or at least plan for, the possibility of like a post-FAD reality. And, and so there's a, you know, there's questions here about the FAD. Why don't we just get to it about, you know, what are the depart, just generally, just what are the department's thoughts and planning for a, the possibility of like a post-FAD reality? And, you know, building filtration plant and just what is the department, and the budget impacts of doing that?
Of course, thank you. And that is a hugely important topic and one we've certainly been paying close attention to. So just a couple of things. First of all, the FAD itself requires us to do on a set schedule, planning for a filtration system so that we are not completely unready if someday the state DOH or EPA itself determines that we have to filter. As part of work that we've been doing on our strategic plan at D E P, we've been looking at the long-term kind of potential longevity of the FAD. And we are very concerned that climate change and increasing drinking water standards at some point may well force us into filtration. Now, this is not, we do not expect this to be imminent. This is not something that we need to plan for in five years or 10 years.
But it's one of these things where if somebody drops the hammer on a, on a mandate, it'll take 20 years to build a plan.
That's right. And right now, we are at least 15, if not 20 years away. And I personally think we should do more to be, to shrink that time period. What the right kind of T-minus number is, is a little unclear. But, but we are certainly looking into this seriously. The other thing that we have found, and this is, I think, really interesting and underappreciated, but something that we're going to be working on very much under a new sub-bureau that Paul Rush is setting up in the Bureau of Water Supply, is thinking about how the FAD needs to change with the times. So one of the things we have found, and as the FAD was, went through its mid-cycle review a couple of years ago, the National Academy of Sciences did a review. And among the things they found was that pretty much west of the Hudson River, more land acquisition has no more positive impact on, on water quality. We've kind of reached that point of diminishing returns from land acquisition. One of the other things that our own research has found, and this was particularly acute when we saw the impacts on our water supply of Hurricane Ida, was that when we have a violent storm, the pollutants that are going into the reservoir are different than they were 30 years ago. So in the 1990s, we were worried about human sources and we were worried about agricultural sources, right? Dairy farms and things like that, right? And so the work of the FAD over the last 30 years has been about septic systems, about wastewater treatment in the communities where we run.
Whole farm program, blah, blah.
Exactly. And then the, the programs with the watershed agricultural council. What we've found is that a lot of the coliform that we saw go into the reservoirs after Hurricane Ida was actually from wildlife. It's a different source. And if you think about.
Oh, so we're like too successful.
Yeah, so we've done very well, right? Which doesn't mean you let up. It doesn't mean, you know, you stop investing in septic systems and things like that. But it does suggest that it's time for us to start thinking creatively about what, how do we ensure that the FAD succeeds over the next 20 years? May require us thinking very differently about what the key components of the FAD are. That's something we, we recognize, we've had discussions with D E C about. We frankly, I've been presenting this to some of the environmental advocates who of, of course, played a big role in setting up the FAD, as you know very well. And our intention is to approach this with a scientific basis, with a creative mindset and with recognizing that the way to extend the life of the FAD may be to think very differently about what it is.
Hear, hear. I mean, I remember all the yelling and screaming leading up to the, this, you know, 1997. That's like almost a long time ago. But yeah, thank you for that, for that update. And now you're looking at that, let me see if I have anything more. We did that. You know, I think I'm just going to go to stuff that's bouncing around up there. You know, once upon a time, the, the one of the toughest places to, so you got Kensico, which has, I think, like a, some small, like 10-square-mile natural watershed or whatever. And, you know, really hard to buy land there because it's all developed or whatever. And once upon a time, this could be a number that's way out of date, that, you know, the water in Kensico, because it's like a pass-through from water coming upstate, that, that 98% of the water in Kensico was from upstate. 2% was native from like the local 10-square-mile or whatever it is watershed. But that 2% of the water from the, from like the local watershed, you know, contributed something like 50% of the pollutants that were in Kensico. As, is, what's the current state of affairs now? Not that this is really like a budget question, but it just.
So I would have to check any of the numbers, but that is, without going necessarily to 50%. Generally speaking, there, you're totally right. It's a tiny percentage of Kensico is captured there. But because we do not have the same extent of natural defenses around Kensico as we do in the west of Hudson watershed, the pollution risk is, is different. Among the things that we have done, and this was in part in the aftermath of Hurricane Sandy and what was the other one that hit upstate?
Irene.
Irene, thank you. We have completed several shoreline stabilization efforts at Kensico. And that uses features like rocks and gravel beds and things like that to provide filtration. We are very aggressive about controlling wildlife, particularly birds. So we do a lot to try to keep birds from hanging out in the Kensico reservoir. But it is certainly a topic that we are, we are thinking about.
Right. Is that one of the, is that, when one thinks of the FAD, is that?
Yes, 100%.
So that's like in the top 10?
100%. And, you know, and the other thing is, as you well know, Mr. Chairman, you know, the, the increasing attention, both globally in general and from the EPA on the issues of these forever chemicals, the PFOS, PFOA, PFOS. We have never found these chemicals in our watershed. However, if there is going to be a place where we are likely to find them, it is going to be in and around the Kensico reservoir. And so that is something we are very focused on. A couple of months ago, I don't remember whether it was this year or end of last year, we requested of the water board a special contract so that we are doing a full assessment of all the tributaries that lead into the Kensico reservoir so we can sample and test for the forever chemicals. And, you know, there is one area of risk, which is at the Westchester County Airport, which you know is right there, which this former Air National Guard site is polluted. I've discussed the site with the county executive. He is very on it, the Westchester congressional delegation. I'm told they have a plan to get federal funding to, to clean that site up.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that foresight, particularly when you talk about these, you know, and again. these, you know. And again, Nassau County is, they've been hit with like, whether it's PFOS, you know, like one of the chemicals they have to, like their limit is one part per billion, and for another one, it's like 10 parts per trillion. It's just like, you know, I, I had, I was already fat and gray when you couldn't test for parts per trillion, you know, and.
Well, and, you know, and this is actually one of the, one of the kind of outstanding risks to the FAD over time is exactly that. So the standards that EPA has issued for PFOS are currently untestable, right? And so, it is true.
Oh, they are untestable?
They are untestable still. And so, it is true that we have never found PFOS west of Hudson. That does not mean we are necessarily in compliance because we literally cannot test. And so that is one of the other kind of, you know, a sort of Damocles hanging over the FAD.
Right, right, right.
Is if someday we were to find that, that could force us into filtration because currently, the conventional wisdom is that, that PFOS and PFOA requires filtration. And I haven't been convinced that there's chemical solutions to that, although I'm sure with the focus on this, there is millions and millions of dollars in R and D being spent by suppliers and contractors around the world on, on treatments for, for those forever chemicals.
Right.
But that is the kind of thing. Now, I will also say, I am not that worried about it. I mean, it is a, an outside risk. Given all of our watershed protections, that is where the land acquisition pays off because you don't get PFOS and PFOA from all the bald eagles in the Catskills. You get it from, you know, fire departments putting out fires and things like that, so.
Yeah, airports, whatever.
We've done a good job there.
And this is, this is great. I appreciate it. And I will mention, this is something that you don't know. But, you know, my predecessor, my, you know, predecessor as chair of this committee was the late Stan Michaels. I, I don't know if anybody in this room, I'm sure some people in this room know who he was. He passed away a couple of years after he left the council. And one of his phrases that he used all the time was the sword of Damocles. And so, and you just make reference to that. And so, Stan is still, you know, having an influence over, over what happens in this room. And I remember him dearly. And I, he was just the, and he was around for all the 1997 yelling and screaming. And yeah, he was, he was a great guy. And we, and we, and we miss him. But thank you, thank you, Commissioner, you and your team for being here today. We look forward for, you know, to putting together a budget that makes sure you're all nice and taken care of, and, and to do all the other work that we'll be doing in the upcoming session. So I, I thank you very much. So it's a pleasure to be dealing with you and your great team. And, yeah, I was like, I was going to say something else, but, having a senior moment here. But, yeah, oh, yeah, I was going to say that, Robert, someone's going to hang behind and make sure that, what's that?
We're always live.
Okay, yep. Yeah. So I was just going to say, I want to make sure that we have other people going to give good testimony. I want to make sure that the administration has the benefit of all the good testimony that's going to follow the great testimony that we just heard. So thank you all very much. With that said, I'm going to do a two-minute recess, and then we'll be calling the first witnesses from the, where we got, okay?
That's cool. Yeah, yeah. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Are you basketball student?
Yeah, hi.
Just been charged for a serious offense.
Oh, no, my racket got busted within, within two hours. Yeah.
Straight from somebody like that.
Yeah. How's, how's your racket doing? Oh, you did a paper racket?
Thank you, Chair.
I haven't done that in so long. What's on us?
Okay, we're going to reconvene. Sorry for that. You know what? Hang on. I think I, forgive me. Middle of an I situation here. You know, you got to put in certain meds at a certain time. It's a stage of life when you start carrying around lists of like meds that you have to take at like a certain time. Yeah, why don't you call the first witness, and then I'll just do this.
I now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recording to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with a sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic, the budget of the New York City Department of Environmental Protection. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov of the 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and visual, audio and video recordings will not be accepted. I will now call the first panel, Sue Holly Mendez with New York Lawyers for the Public Interest, Anil Pazram from Jamaica Bay Rockaway Parks Conservancy, and Miranda Massey with the Climate Museum.
Now, I, I just want to reaffirm what the council to the committee has said, in that this is technically a budget hearing. And so, any policy matters that, that you wish to discuss, there has to be like a nexus to the budget. Some people use any opportunity, and I would too, to come for a committee and talk about policy matters. This is a budget hearing. And so, there has to be at least some tenuous connection to the budget. Okay? And with that said, how do we, why don't we start from my left to the right? So I'll, I'll, I don't, what's this witness's name?
Miranda Massey.
Okay. Yeah, so please state your name for the, oh, you already did, so please commence with your good testimony.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to be here. As a reminder, way back in yesteryear, you and I worked together on PCBs in New York City schools, back when I was Sue Holly Mendez's colleague at New York Lawyers for the Public Interest. And since then, you've engaged a lot with my current work at the Climate Museum, including through the introduction of Resolution 82. We're very excited about that and really look forward to getting a hearing on the books and getting, drumming up some more support for it. My testimony is a change of pace, for sure, but it does have a, have a connection to the budgetary matters that you all have been discussing because it's critically important for you and other forward-thinking policymakers on climate to have the support of New York City communities and members of the public. At the Climate Museum, we use the arts to mobilize civic engagement with the climate crisis. And in our first six years of public-facing programming, we've reached more than 150,000 New York City residents and tourists. Many thousands of high school students and also younger and older young people have come through our youth leadership programs. And our visitors tell us that engaging with the arts and climate and with solutions and pathways forward increases their sense of agency and their sense of civic engagement massively. We recently had a front-page story on the New York Times Arts Section. We've been asked to partner with Brooklyn Botanic Garden and Rockefeller Center. We've been very lucky as a new organization. But still, we face the prospect of going out of business in the very short term. And so, I come before you, both in relation to that resolution, and also to ask you to consider using your convening power to gather a roundtable that would be not just about the Climate Museum in a narrow sense, though that's very dear to me and to our visitors and the community members we, we serve, but also to the sector, if I can just finish my sentence, of the, at the intersection of climate and cultural work, which is growing in New York City but dramatically underfunded, and has the capacity to elevate New York City's climate leadership by drawing on our, our superpower as one of the cultural capitals of the world. The work at that intersection is incredibly important, and it's growing, but it's really underfunded. And it would be great, we're not asking you for money, but it would be great to convene a conversation, and you and a few others could do that, to talk about how we can help this sector grow, and maybe, in the process, save the Climate Museum, which is, we're told is a worthy institution.
Yes, I think it is a worthy institution. So here's what I'm going to do. I've got my legislative directive, legislative director, you know, Naby Cor. If you could just, you know, once this panel is finished, if you could, you know, take Miranda into the halls for a little sidebar, to figure out how we can facilitate, you know, the conversation that she envisions, okay? So, once this panel is done, then talk to Naby, and we'll get that, get.
Thank you so much, sir.
Oh, you bet. It's a pleasure to work with you over the years.
Likewise, truly.
Are these, are these the names? Oh, we don't know who's who. This is one of the middle? Okay, okay. All right. Oh, I, yeah, I, I can't, I'm wearing our reading glasses, but they kind of don't work in the middle of an I thing. So please state your name for the record and.
Good afternoon. My name is Anil Pazram. I'm the stewardship coordinator at the Jamaica Bay Rockaway Parks Conservancy. We are a public-private partnership dedicated to improving 10,000 acres of public parklands throughout Jamaica Bay and the Rockaway Peninsula, and 18,000 acres of open water and marshlands within Jamaica Bay. In 2023, we started the Jamaica Bay Wetlands Fellowship Program. It works as a development program dedicated to training the next generation of wetland managers. Within six months, the wetland fellows planted over 70,000 invasive plants, sorry, sorry, native plants, cleared over five acres of invasive species, and removed over six tons of debris from our marshlands and shorelines. Jamaica Bay wetlands are disappearing at a rate of over 40 acres per year. And to ensure the sustainability of restoration sites. ensure the sustainability of restoration sites, maintenance must be part of the solution. Wetlands play a crucial role in climate adaptation. They are natural buffers against flooding, reduce the impacts of extreme weather, and sequester carbon at a rate 10 times greater than that of forests. Our goal is the restoration of Jamaica Bay wetlands, which are the first line of defense for surrounding communities. The Jamaica Bay Wetlands Fellowship Program provides opportunities for young adults to experience potential career paths that need to be significantly expanded in New York City. Although New York City Parks has a stewardship, wetland stewardship team, there just aren't enough wetland caretakers needed to fulfill the scope of work that both restoration and maintenance of our wetlands demand. For a city with 520 miles of coastline and a mandate to expand waterfront access, we will need a massive investment in these jobs and training programs to meet the demand for skilled maintenance and management of these vital ecosystems in the future. Thank you, Chairman Gennaro, and all council members and the committee, committee for allowing this opportunity.
Uh, thank you for your good testimony. Now, so, um, you represented Jamaica Bay Rockaway Parks Conservancy, that's what you said, right?
Correct.
Now, down there, you got the Jamaica Bay Eco Watchers, Dan Monday and those guys, right? You know them? Uh, Don Rippey, right? He's always there.
Great partners of ours.
What's that?
Great partners of ours.
Yeah. And, um, um, so this conservancy, um, is, is it like a standalone thing or, or is that, how does it, how does that, how does that work? How did that come to be?
So it was founded in 2023 as a Bloomberg administration, during the Bloomberg administration, as a way to get all these park agencies...
2023, no.
Uh, sorry, uh, correction, uh, 2013.
Right, okay.
Um, it was founded, there was a need between the park agencies that surround Jamaica Bay. We have New York State, New York City Parks, state parks, and federal parks land. And we were formed as a way to bring these parks together, all these agencies, and really fill the need within the section itself.
And, um, then, so do you have a relationship with the National Park Service and all that?
Yeah, so we do work closely, um, within those agencies, across all agencies, that is.
Right. And where does your funding come from?
Um, it's both public and, and private.
Oh, you said the public-private partnership or whatever. Well, um, yeah, we, we, we would, also, you should meet with Nabi just so we can get, just so we can stay in touch with, with, with sort of like what you're, what you're doing and, you know, ways that we could, um, uh, you know, partner with other stake, I guess you know all the elected officials down there, Joe Adabo and all those, or whoever.
Correct. Just to put it out there, it's also, it's not a factor that we're trying to get in complete funding. We're also just trying to put it out there for different agencies to really see this, this role as like wetland managers need to be filled. And during all these restoration projects, we want to make sure that maintenance is part of that, that, that budget talk for, you know, years to come. Because, you know, it's not just one, you set the, you do the restoration project and leave it alone. These, these projects are not self-sustaining. So going forward in, in the budget talks, we just need maintenance in part of that.
But, but you need people as well, right?
Correct, so that's a start.
So, do you have a relationship with Queens College, for example? They've got a good natural science program there, they've got their earth and environmental sciences program. Do you have a relationship with them?
Um, not closely.
Well, you're gonna. And so, um, Nabi, if you could, you know, if you, what's your first name?
Anil.
Anil, okay. If you get, um, Anil, uh, you know, connected to Queens College through Jeff Rosenstock, because I think that'd be a good, I think that'd be a good partnership.
Great.
Because they have a lot of, because college students is the age you're looking for, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, so let, let's, let's, um, you know, get them connected to Queens College and I'll talk to Queens College, I'll make them an offer they can't refuse and so...
Appreciate it.
Great. No, uh, my pleasure. Please, state your name for the record and continue.
Sure.
Oh, do, do I have your, oh, okay, it's, it's, so, so this is your, uh, this is, this is your testimony here, right? Okay. Yeah, Sergeant, give this to Nabi, just so she has this, yeah. Thank you, Sergeant. Please.
Thank you.
And do you have, do you have written testimony as well? Is this it?
Yes, I provided it, that's correct.
All right, okay.
Okay. Um, good afternoon, my name is Suhalim Mendez and I'm the Policy and Legislative Coordinator at New York Lawyers for the Public Interest. Um, I'd like to thank you, Chairman, for, um, holding this hearing and, and giving me an opportunity to provide testimony along with members of City Council's Environmental Protection Resiliency and Waterfronts Committee. Um, today I would like to highlight, um, three areas, um, one of which is the Department of Education, I mean, excuse me, Environmental Protections' proposed rules on the idling law, um, private sewer line repairs, and Rikers Island Power Plant for, um, the Council's consideration for the preliminary budget. The first, um, is the, um, DEP's proposed rules for the term adjacent. We are puzzled specifically by the, um, the DEP's proposal to restrict the instances in which school buses, trucks, and other heavy vehicles would be found to be illegally idling close to schools and parks, as, as engine idling near schools remain a major issue in our city. In our recent report, which was published in November called Wake Up and Spout of Fumes, we found that New York City's massive school bus fleet has an outsized environmental impact on our cities and communities. We found as many as one in four school buses, um, were idling near schools in violation of the city law. And idling diesel and gas line combustion engines, as we know, they spew dangerous emissions that harm human health and the environment. So clearly, we're in opposition for this, um, rule to change on the definition of adjacence. The second item will be the private sewer line repairs. Um, New York City homeowners and tenants are already facing chronic, oh, I'm out of time.
Yeah, just try to, I'll, 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 I'll give you a little...
I appreciate it. Um, so, New York City homeowners and tenants are facing chronic sewer backups and flooding that may, um, poses major health and financial risks. And we, and is rapidly worsening and sea levels areas, um, rising and extreme weather become routine. We hope to collaborate with the Council and DEP to seek innovative funding solutions to ensure low and moderate income homeowners and tenants can make repairs to private sewer lines in connection and install retrofits to prevent flooding and damage. And, um, I, the other topics are covered in testimony at length and I will also be providing that, um, online. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And also, uh, make sure you, you give a copy of your, um, testimony to my legislative director. We want to be aware of, 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 of your concerns and how we can, you know, work with the, the New York lawyers to, um, to, to, to help in all these areas. So you, you have a, you have a copy of your own testimony, right? And so, um, uh, so Nabi, you got to go to work on this whole panel here. So, thank you, thank you for that. I appreciate you all being here and, um, Nabi's your next step, okay? And so, yeah, she will, she'll be holding court out, out in the hall. Thank you, Nabi, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you bet, you bet. Thanks for, thanks for coming out.
The next panel is Maite Dukeyla with the Waterfront Alliance, Isa Diara, and Mohammed Attia with the Street Vendor Project.
This is their statements, right? Do we have a third panelist? Three were called. Okay, I guess we had two.
Uh, Maite, they were Maite Dukeyla, Isa Diara, and Mohammed, Mohammed Attia.
Okay. Please, please, just, uh, state your name for the record and I've been, I've been corrected in the way I've been dealing with witnesses, once the, yeah, don't start yet, but once the, once the two minutes is up, I, I, I have to indicate that your time has expired. At that point, I, you know, may ask you to, you know, in the form of a question, ask you to continue if I'm, if, if you're really going someplace. And so, there you have it. And so state your name for the record and commence with your testimony.
Thank you. My name is Maite Dukeyla. I'm the Climate Policy Fellow at Waterfront Alliance. I'm grateful to be here to testify in front of you today in favor of sustained dedicated funding and long-term planning for climate resilience efforts. Climate risk and impacts are no longer abstract, they are the reality of today, and in order to reduce the city's vulnerability to climate change, direct and bold action must be taken immediately. And that action starts by explicitly establishing line items in the city's budget dedicated towards climate resilience programs. Even in the understanding of the current context of constraints, fiscal restrictions, and uncertainties, spending on climate resilience cannot be lost or minimized. One example of an innovative way to support the budget is by restructuring water utility bills to reflect properties' contributions to stormwater runoff. This will benefit the city from designated revenues for stormwater management and from incentives for more green infrastructure that reduces flooding events. So Waterfront Alliance calls on the City Council to pass a resolution of support for the Assembly Bill A9435 that categorizes stormwater separately and fairly for homeowners. We would also like to see long-term dedicated and increased funding for programs like the Cloud Burst Management Program, the Blue Belt Program, the Home Fix Program, and the Housing Mobility and Land Adaptation Program. However, dedicated long-term funding is only half of the equation. There is an urgent need for comprehensive, long-term planning for climate resilience in the city, which will dictate how funding can and should be spent. The Local Law 122 established a five borough climate adaptation plan. While the city made the initial step of creating an educational website known as Adopt NYC, we strongly urged the city to allocate resources towards the creation of a thorough detailed plan with specific measures to be taken, timelines, goals, and indicators to track progress over time. Thank you.
Your time has elapsed, I, that's the first time I like said that, I'm supposed to say that. Thank you very much. I just want to tell you that we, we got some good news in store for you, I believe. I, I'm not speaking for them, but I know that, you know, in an attempt to, um, deal with, uh, stormwater, um, there is, um, something that's in the works now is that, to the extent that one has, um, impervious services on their property, there will be, there'll be some kind of assessment made because of the contribution to stormwater that those, um, impervious services are making. That will be built into your water bill. This will create the incentive, um, for example, people like myself who have just about to, you know, change out my driveway and so, I mean, we bought the house years ago, it was, it was a concrete driveway. And so now I'm replacing, I'm going to use porous pavement. And so this will give people an incentive to get out from under the, what I believe to be, um, a, a soon levied, um, you know, kind of assessment that'll be made. Um, and all, all of your other points were excellent. And I love the Waterfront Alliance because they gave me my first environmental award way back when I had black hair, you know? I was, I was the hero, a hero of the harbor. Back, that was back when it was the Metropolitan Waterfront Alliance. Yeah, long time ago. I, what, 2000? It was like, it was like 20 years ago, yeah. Yeah, so, thank you for coming, appreciate your good testimony. Sir?
Good afternoon. I'm out here with Jamaica Bay Wetland Fellowship. My name is Isa Diara. And in 2023, I had the pleasure of being part of the first Jamaica Bay Wetlands Fellowship cohort. I've been a far Rockaway, far Rockaway resident for 18 years, but in the past five years, I've started to notice dramatic changes in flooding as it has became more consistent. Smaller rain events now seem like heavy rainstorms and regular high tides are causing flooding throughout the Rockaways more frequently. Not only are people homes being affected, but also schools and our overall livelihoods as, uh, Rockaway, uh, residents. Initially, I grew up thinking someone else would address these issues and protect our community. It was not until I joined the Wetlands Fellowship Program that I felt like I became that person who was now stepping up. In addition to learning the importance, importance of wetlands as they are the first line of defense against storm surges, it became apparent that they need care, restoration, and further investments. Having the opportunity to work already makes a huge difference, but allowing me to share the many lessons learned and show my community that they can also be a part of the solution makes the experience all the more meaningful. It was truly a great feeling working alongside locals from neighboring communities, all dedicated to making a difference in our bay. These nature-based jobs not only benefit frontlines communities like mine, but also create a connection between the communities and its surrounding environment, fostering community stewardship from within. Continued investments in our wet, on our waterfronts, parklands, and bay means continued investments in our frontline communities. I hope the community, I hope the committee will continue to support workforce development programs like the Wetlands Fellowship and further this, and further the discussion and creating more opportunities like this. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak.
Thank you. And, and just tell me a little bit about the Wetlands Fellowship, like, like, what is it? How did it come to be and how did you get connected with it and how does it work?
Well, for me, I was looking, I was looking for work and I, where, like, where I live at, there's not much, like, much opportunities there. So I was, I was on my way paying rent and then they gave me this opportunity if you want to help the community and stuff. And I was looking, I was looking through the website and then it was just, and since then I fell in love.
Wow. And so this is, this is, this is your livelihood now?
Technically.
Wow. And, and you work by Jamaica Bay or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm one of the residents in there. I live right across the street from the bay, so I see, I see it all the time when, like, heavy rains come, I see it all the time flooding the streets and stuff.
Yeah, yeah. And your local council member is probably Selena Brooks-Powers, is that who it is?
Uh, yes, I think so.
Yeah, yeah, she's always talking about flooding in the Rockaways and she's, um, she's part of the leadership of the council. Um, but, uh, you know, thank you for, for your compelling testimony and, uh, now, does the fellowship program get city funding? Like, does it get?
Yes, yes.
Um, okay. Well, um, I'll, I'll certainly keep an eye out for that and, um, it, it, you have a great story, it's really good and...
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for, um, enriching this hearing by being here and telling us your story. I'll certainly look out for that funding and thank you again.
I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
You bet. And, uh, that was a good panel, it was good, yeah. And so, um, yeah, so we'll, 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 we'll call the next panel, right? Okay?
The next panel is Hunter Severini, Hayden Brockett with New York Clean Air Collective, and Nick Konstantinku. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Uh, Sergeant? I, I think this is better directed to the Sergeant. Okay, we'll follow the same protocol, my left to my, to my right. We'll start with the gentleman in the black blazer and please state your name for the record and commence with your testimony. Oh, you got to talk right into the microphone, I think it's off.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Gennaro. My name is Hunter Severini. I'm the resident of Lower Manhattan. I'm the resident of Lower Manhattan, and I'm here to testify in support of the Citizens Air Complaint Program. Thanks in large part to support from the city council. This program is an ever-increasing success, and I'm here to ask that you give this program the highest possible consideration in the city budget. Currently, the DEP is receiving about three hundred idling complaints a day from citizens, putting the city on track for over a hundred thousand complaints this year, as Ritt mentioned. This is an enormous workload to manage and would benefit from further resources being allocated. The practical result would be that respondents are notified of violations more quickly, and hearing dates are scheduled closer in the future. To further strengthen this program, I suggest that the council pass legislation requiring the Department of Environmental Protection to establish and maintain a database of past offenses based on license plate number, to issue summonses with the maximum possible offense based on alleged previous offenses, and to adjourn hearings whenever there are potential previous violations that need to be adjudicated first. According to idling.nyc-stats.html, which uses open source data, as of March twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, there are over one million dollars in unassessed fines, reflecting both undercharged tickets and under-assessed fines. In twenty twenty-three, over twenty percent of tickets issued were erroneous. The practical result of this was that companies got a large number of first offense summonses for the same license plate, surely not how the system was intended to be working. There's even a public website that shows past offenses, idling.nyc-check.html, and this is, information is also available on New York Open Data. Additional resources directed towards this program could be of benefit in many ways. As part of the aforementioned proposed database of past offenders, the DEP could maintain more consistency by ensuring all summonses are served to the correct entity based on New York Department of State or U S D O T records. Right now, this is done scarcely and inconsistently, and if it were improved,
Your time has expired. But I will, you, you, your time has expired, but I'll ask you to, um, you, um, continue a little bit to finish your thought.
Okay, sure. As I was saying, if this were approved, the city would have far better options to pursue collection of violations. As I mentioned before, the volume of citizen complaints is significant and ever-increasing. I believe that it is necessary to shore up this program before it becomes even more overwhelming for the city to keep up with. It would be great to have a higher retention of air complaint reviewers and to give them more resources to do their job effectively. When considering the many successes of this program, particularly its effect on the environment and profitability for the city, I believe that there's a strong case for further investment. I also believe that there's a strong case for passing O two ninety-one, twenty twenty-four, which would increase the civil penalties for idling infractions. This law would ensure the continued effectiveness and survivability of this program.
Thank you. What I'll ask you to do is if you could some way transmit your full testimony to my legislative director, because you do, do talk about legislative initiatives in there. So I want to, want to make sure that my legislative director has the full benefit of your entire testimony.
Yeah, I'll be sure to do that. Thank you.
Okay, you bet. Okay, thank you.
Are you ready for me, Chair?
Yes, I am.
All right, great. My name is Hayden Brockett. I'm a founding member of the New York Clean Air Collective, and I want to thank you, Chair Gennaro, and your staff, and the members of the committee. On behalf of the New York Clean Air Collective and as a father of two children in New York City Public Schools, I'm testifying today. Here's my budget hook, Chair.
Yep.
In support of increased funding, as Mr. Severini mentioned, for the DEP's Bureau of Enforcement Compliance, excuse me, Environmental Compliance. Specifically, there should be increased headcount and raised salaries for the citizen air complaint reviewers. These frontline workers, they have an extremely difficult job reviewing the citizen idling complaint videos, but it's extremely important as well. They help administer the most successful citizen environmental program in the world, that is the Citizens Air Complaint Program. And it's a shining example of how citizen enforcement works to combat climate change and to protect our air on the local level. We are a nonprofit organization dedicated to protecting New Yorkers' rights to enjoy clean air, including by supporting the hundreds of participants in the Citizen Air Complaint Program. We hold polluting companies accountable. Companies like ConEd, Verizon, and Loomis pollute our air to fuel their profits. And we work to combat environmental racism and to mitigate the causes and effects of climate change, especially around schools and in and around our parks. We also conduct trainings and perform advocacy to expand the participation in this program throughout the five bureaus. So we support increased funding of citizen complaint reviewers, period. But we're also very concerned about some of the things that were mentioned by the DEP and past legislative proposals, including those advanced by the DEP, which we feel would have gutted this crucial program. We are also strongly in opposition to the variances that DEP has granted to polluting companies like Loomis that grant, you know, gigantic holes in our idling laws for specific companies that actually don't change their behavior. And we also look forward to working with you, as my colleague mentioned, Chairman Gennaro. And we would like to work with DEP leadership, although we've sort of been stiff-armed.
Thank you. Your, your, your time has expired, but please finish it.
Thank you so much. We would like to craft legislation that truly benefits the air rather than discouraging participation in this crucial, successful, and quite honestly, hopeful program. It's, it really has been, just on a personal level, hope-inspiring to be able to help enforce our air code and to protect our air around where my kids go to school. So I, I really hope that we can work together productively to make sure that the legislation that comes out of this committee benefits all of New Yorkers.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Hayden. And, uh, and if you, and again, like,
I, I know Nabi, and I don't want you to cut you off, Chair. I will make sure that
Oh, fine.
the appropriate folks get the right
Good, 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 good. Thank you. I'm for that.
All right.
Thank you for having me here today.
You bet.
I live in District thirty-eight. I'm a property owner, and I live in the community as well. I've been having a problem with my sewer backing up for over fifteen-plus years. It has gone on deaf ears with the city. I have stated to the city that my sewer pipe is in line directly where the, I don't know what you want to call them. They're not potholes because they're beyond potholes. Nothing has been done. Recently, I've been calling up for the past three years, three-one-one, to state DEP to come to my property and do an examination of my complaint. I complained that when tractor trailers hit the bumps on the, the caving roads, my building shakes and vibrates. You cannot sit on the corner without you feeling like you're in an earthquake. Now my pipe has confirmed that it's broken seventeen feet past the curb, and now DEP wants me to spend the money and fix it? Meanwhile, DEP doesn't have the budget to fix anything, and they expect me, as a homeowner, to have the budget to spend thirty thousand dollars to fix a, a problem that the city should have took good care of it fifteen-plus years ago?
So, here's, so who's here from the Bloomberg administration? Who's taking, who's listening to testimony from the Bloomberg administration? Who's here? Yeah, oh, pardon me. Yeah, yeah, from, from, from the Adams administration. Who's here? Because I, I, I talked to Robert. I wanted to make sure if someone is here from the administration to hear the testimony. Anybody here from the Adams administration?
Can I continue before the clock finishes?
Yeah, don't, just don't worry about the clock. I mean, even though you think it's, I, I just feel for you. This is not a budget matter, but I feel for you. So I, I, I want to help you out. So call, call, so call Robert Cataldo and tell him to come back here. Okay? You have his number, right? So call Robert Cataldo, tell him to come back here or to send someone from the administration. Because I, you know, this gentleman should have, I, I, I'm going to provide you an opportunity to bring your complaint directly to the mayor's office. And so
My councilwoman spoke about this earlier. I was the one that she said about fifteen-plus years on Third Avenue underneath the
Alexa.
Yes.
Alexa. Okay. Well, um, she's a, she's a, a very good council member, and I'm, I'm sure she is trying to do her best. But, um, so she'll do what she's going to do, but I'm going to get you face-to-face with someone in the administration.
Okay, I just wanted on the record that when something happens on Third Avenue and it caves in, and God forbid, somebody loses his life, I'm going to be that guy on the news. I told you so.
You should be the guy on the news. You should be the guy.
I just want to make that perfect
No, that's fine. But, I mean, we are the legislative branch, and, uh, the, the, the problem that you've brought forward is definitely under the purview of the executive branch. You know, meaning that it involves DEP, it involves all of the, this is, like, like, the council doesn't fix potholes, but
This is more than just a pothole. People walk underneath the streets. My waterline broke seven years ago, and the people who came to fix it didn't have to snake it the normal way. They literally walked underneath to the other side of the street with concrete hanging. You can clearly see, it's, it's a nightmare there. Somebody needs to come and examine this before this is a catastrophe.
Okay. And so, um, my, my, my staff is on the phone. I, I, I'd ask that, that you stay here until a representative from the administration. And, and also, Nabi, you can tell, you can tell the administration they're very disappointed that I went out of my way to tell them to stay here, to listen to testimony, because exactly for this kind of, you know, like, exactly for this reason. But you know what they're probably doing? They're probably watching the livestream. Hello? Where's the camera? Come back here.
And the commissioner
Whoever is watching from the Adams administration, we need you to come back here and be in the room. And we should have a policy, Nabi, going forward, no, to declare that when we, when we set up, when we set up the thing for, for a hearing, we talk about like who's going to testify, we want to know who is physically going to stay behind and not just watch on the livestream. Because it's different having somebody watching on the livestream. Maybe they're watching, maybe they're not, but we want to hear. But, uh, but with that said, this is, so, so we're going to call the next panel.
Can you just give me one second, please?
I, I, I
DEP stated that I can send it to the city controllers. As long as you own, with the city controller, you never, the city's never liable for anything. And then also, the DEP commissioner stated that, oh, they can have insurance. Unfortunately, I own a multiple-family unit. I don't qualify for that kind of insurance. Lucky me.
This is a case that you can make to the administration, you know, eyeball to eyeball. And so I, I, I think I've tried to be accommodating because this is not a budget thing, but I, I sympathize. I have hundred-and-seventy-something thousand constituents, and so I'm doing some constituent work, but, you know, I, I have to move forward with the hearing.
Um, thank you.
So, all right. Well, thank you for coming forward. And so you know Alexa, right? She's your council member.
If it wasn't for Alexa, three women, DEP, who they never came in.
Okay.
And then when DEP calls me, they seem annoyed that my councilwoman and my senator and my assembly person called them and then threatened me over the phone that if they do come there, they're going to give me a thirty days. They did give me the thirty days. Thirty thousand dollars. DEP doesn't have the budget, but me, as a homeowner, I'm
Okay. You're off the record now, and so, but, but
You don't understand my frustration.
I do, and I see it. And so we'll have someone from the administration to, to talk to you. Please call the next council. Oh, I'm waving this around, but so, so is this the new slips or the old slips?
Those are the old ones.
Oh, oh, okay. So what's the next panel?
Uh, Zoom.
Oh, with Zoom? We're moving to Zoom.
We will now turn to remote testimony. When your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. And the first witness that we will have is Mohammed Attia with the Street Vendor Project at Urban Justice Center.
You may begin.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Gennaro. My name is Mohammed Attia. I'm the managing director of the Street Vendor Project at the Urban Justice Center. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. The Street Vendor Project is a membership-based organization that champions the rights of street vendors as small businesses to earn a living and contribute to the culture and life of New York City. SVP respectfully requests funding to sustain and expand the Environmental Justice for Vendors by Vendors Program. This program is a street vendor-led initiative to reduce the carbon footprint of New York City food carts and trucks that are currently five thousand one hundred permitted food vending units in New York City. Most carts and trucks use fossil fuel generators, which emit harmful air and noise pollutants that negatively impact both the environment and vendor health. Yet vendors lack clear and affordable alternative technologies to reduce these emissions. Since twenty twenty-one, SVP has been engaging vendors and other stakeholders in a collaborative effort to identify more sustainable vending technology and proactively anticipate barriers to scalability and adoption. Through this process, we have identified and tested environmentally sustainable, healthy, and safe batteries that are long-lasting enough to power food vending carts and trucks. We are currently piloting this program by electrifying a select number of food carts and trucks with clean, quiet, reliable energy. So far, we have generated a lot of interest from the vending community to improve their business practices. We are, we were able to prove to the vendors that batteries actually work and can replace their gasoline-powered generators. And we also learned so much about the challenges and opportunities that we will be navigating throughout this program. With funding from the council, we are hoping to accomplish the following. One, hire a program manager and outreach specialist to staff the program, to expand our testing of zero-emission products to replace the generators in food carts and trucks with at least twenty vendors.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your testimony.
May I have a few more seconds to wrap my last two points?
Sure. I'll, I'll, I'll allow that.
Thanks so much, Chair. The third point is actually conducting community education and outreach in seven different languages to five hundred food vendors and ten commissaries and garages to promote and support vendors' transition to clean energy. The fourth point is pilot connecting vendors to the grid in partnership with stakeholders, experts, and interested elected officials. The very last thing would be to expand our coalition and create a shared understanding amongst stakeholders about the environmental impact of food carts and trucks and the alternative solutions that are out there. Thank you so much for having me today.
Thank you. And, uh, if I could ask you to, um, submit your testimony in full to the council? There's a website or something? Or could you please?
Sure thing.
Yeah, so, 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 so the council, the committee is going to give you the, um, the, the website or whatever it is. Go ahead.
Please submit your testimony to an email address. The email is testimony@council.nyc.gov.
Sure thing. Thanks so much, Chair.
Thank you. That'll give us the ability to, you know, put this into the record. And, yeah, as we go through the budget, we want to make sure we give your request due consideration.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for testifying.
Thanks for having me.
You bet.
The next witness is Lonnie J. Portis with We Act for Environmental Justice.
You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Gennaro.
Lonnie!
Environmental Protection.
Lonnie!
How you doing?
I'm good.
It feels like it's been a long time.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but, uh, good afternoon, Chair Gennaro and the Environmental Protection Committee. And thank you for the opportunity to testify on four key items today. And I'll submit detailed written testimony. For those who don't know me, I'm Lonnie Portis, the New York City Policy Manager.
Everybody knows Lonnie Portis.
I want to start by saying that We Act definitely opposes the DEP water rental payment outline, outlined in the January two twenty, two thousand twenty-four financial plan.
We're going to make, I'm going to make a big deal about this, and I need, you know, We Act to, and this is not about DEP. You know, this is the administrat, I, I, don't worry about your time. I'll, 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 I'll give you the time because I'm jumping in. This is four hundred forty million dollars. And, um, you know, people pay their water and sewer bills. You know, it's, it's supposed to be going to water and sewer, not four hundred forty million dollars to, to go into the general fund. You know, this is an outrage, and we, we need, we need more than me doing this. And so once this, once this becomes, I mean, I, 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 I want this issue to become like a flashpoint. And so I'm, I'm, I'm so happy that you're picking up on this because no one knows about the rental payment. No one knows what it is. And everyone who was around when this thing was created is dead, except for me. You know, so this is, this goes back a long time. And so this, this is great. So please continue.
Yeah, so to, to your point there, there are definitely quite a few advocates that are going to support you on this aspect. But like you said, the four hundred forty million dollars can go to making essential infrastructure upgrades, especially in environmental justice communities. And with the estimates showing that the city tax revenues by more than three billion dollars for the current and upcoming fiscal years, the city does not need this revenue stream for the general fund. So we urge that the council reject the water rental payment in their budget response. the water rental payment in their budget response. We'll definitely reach out and be in touch about, you know, partnering with that cause as well. When it comes to the Plan YC, Getting Sustainability Done, I want to say that We Act advised that the council go through--
Say that again. Say that again. The Plan YC what?
Yeah, the Plan YC--
Your time has expired. But your time has expired, but I'm asking you to continue. And so what did you just say about the-- What was that?
The Plan YC, Getting Sustainability Done--
Oh, okay, yeah.
--and from the mayor's office.
Yep.
Yeah, we advise that the council kind of go through this plan and identify everything that has like fiscal need and make strategic investments in these initiatives and actions. And we really want to see emphasis on green infrastructure projects, such as the rain gardens, bio swells, water squares, green and blue belts, river daylighting, and permeable pavement to really help absorb the stormwater, purify our air, and mitigate the urban heat island effect. You know, advocates really appreciate plans, but we're kind of exhausted by them. And we want to see action, and we want to see more direct investment by the city. And two more points here that I want to make. You know, funding for the mayor's office of Climate and Environmental Justice is AdAPT NYC, particularly the Climate Strong Communities Program, which I quoted, you know, "is intended to invest in communities left unaddressed by limited hurricane-sandy recovery funding with a focus on environmental justice, and it leverages existing resiliency and sustainability planning and capital commitments." The Climate Strong Communities Program is vital to the environmental justice communities like East Harlem, who are in desperate need of implementation of the Vision Plan for the resilient Harlem. The city must go beyond seeking state and federal funding to do this work and put substantial investment in the future in a true citywide adaptation plan via AdAPT NYC. And the last piece here that I just want to make sure we address is that We Act is concerned at there's a lack of financial support for environmental justice. There have been some challenges and obstacles in achieving some of MLCJ's goals. The commissioner addressed MLCJ's pet cuts issue for this budget cycle, so I won't, you know, go into any of that aspect. But we want to thank you, Chair Gennaro, and this committee, and the majority of the city council for their commitment to advancing environmental justice through policy. However, you know, for the record, I still want to state that these commitments to environmental justice must be supported financially. And it's been-- We Act requests for the past few years that the city council provides annual funding of $1 million to the MLCJ and starting in the fiscal year 2025. But, you know, we want to ensure-- We want the assurance that MLCJ can properly execute its plan and do meaningful outreach to disadvantaged communities. But that's all I have for testimony, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Lonnie. Always good to see you. Give my best to everyone at We Act. You know, particularly Peggy. I don't know if she comes around that much. But you see her, right? You see her around, right?
Yeah, we see Peggy. I definitely always tell her that you said hey.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Lonnie. Appreciate it.